For a written transcript of this meeting, or if you need reasonable accommodations, including this communication in an alternative format due to disability, please contact the clerk to the commission's office at four zero four six one two eight two three two.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the June twenty first, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Fulton County Board of Commissioners. It is ten o'clock a.m., June twenty first, twenty twenty-three. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chairman Rob Pitts.
Present.
Commissioner Bridget Thorn. Vice Chairman Bob Ellis. Commissioner Dana Barrett.
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Hall.
Present.
Commissioner Marvin Arrington, Jr.
Present.
Commissioner Kadeeja Abdul-Rahman.
Present.
Mister Chairman, you have a quorum.
All right, Commissioner Ellis is en route from the airport. He's left vacation to come for this meeting. He'll be here and go back to vacation, but he's en route. All right, please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty and gracious God, we are grateful for this day that you have given us. We pray now your blessings upon those who are present. Bless now our leaders. Give them your direction and your courage and your strength. It is in your name that we humbly pray. Amen.
Amen. Continue, Madam Clerk.
On page two, Consent Agenda. Twenty-three, zero, three, nine, three. Adoption of the Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the Consent Agenda are considered routine by the county commission and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion will take place on these items. If discussion of any Consent Agenda item is desired, the item will be moved to the recessed meeting agenda for separate consideration.
All right, any items on the Consent Agenda to be removed? None? Motion to approve.
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Arrington?
I wanted to request from Commissioner Hall if I could be added to the proclamations for D.J. Monte, Corey Rovis, and M.C. Assau, D.J. Chelley, Ryan Cameron, Dr. Doris Derby, and Maynard Eaton, remembering.
Absolutely. It was such short notice. I didn't have enough time to actually contact everyone and get your names on there, so it's a pleasure.
All right, the motion on the floor is to approve the Consent Agenda. Motion to approve, our Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Abdul-Rahman.
As amended.
As amended, please vote.
Thank you.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays. On page seven, Recess Meeting Agenda. Twenty-three, zero, four, one, zero. Adoption of the Recess Meeting Agenda. Mister Chairman and Members of the Board, we have some amendments to today's recessed meeting agenda. We have a proclamation to add. Twenty-three, zero, four, one, two, on page seven. Elizabeth Markowitz. Appreciation Day, sponsored by our Commissioner Hall. On page eleven. Twenty-three, zero, four, three, one. Request approval and ordinance to amend the Fulton County Code of Resolutions relating to budgetary controls for members of the Board of Commissioners to provide for the inclusion of paid interns as a permissible use for commissioners' budgets, sponsored by our Commissioner Hall. This was amended, revised to amend the language in the resolution, starting on the bottom of page two. And we have an item to move up today on today's recessed meeting agenda, on page twelve. Board of Registration and Elections. Twenty-three, zero, three, eight, seven. The Fulton County Republican Party has nominated Jason Frazier for a full board appointment to a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. This item is to be heard after public comment as requested by Commissioner Thorn.
Okay, anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Commissioners? All right, so motion, motion to approve by our Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Thorn. Let's vote.
And the vote is open to approve as amended. And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays. Twenty-three, zero, four, one, one. Ratification of minutes, recessed meeting minutes, May seventeenth. Regular meeting post agenda minutes, June seventh, twenty twenty-three.
All right, a motion to approve by Commissioner Hall. It is seconded by Commissioner Abdul-Rahman. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays. Twenty-three, zero, four, one, two. Presentation of Proclamations and Certificates. The first proclamation is recognizing Levita Bennett. Appreciation Day, sponsored by Commissioner Abdul-Rahman.
Okay, how many, two? All right, it's ten oh six.
The next proclamation is recon- Okay, when the sake of time, we're gonna get started. Whereas Levita Bennett is a twenty-year Marine veteran whose father was a professional musician and civil rights advocate, and her mother was a Pentecostal preacher. And whereas Levita was medically discharged from the Marine Corps and began her work as an advocate for women veterans and started her initiative while she was the Washington, D.C.-sanctioned VA Volunteer Women's Advocate and Volunteer Representative for Women Veterans. And whereas in addition to working with veterans, Levita helps others start their gardens, including Chapel Hill Elementary School and Lucia Sanders Elementary. She also volunteers to assist the homeless population by distributing blankets, shoes, food, and personal hygiene products for both men and women. And whereas Levita has worked with several organizations, including Etcher Services Enrichment, which provides clothing, foods, and toys to low-income families, Marine Corps League, Marine Corps League Auxiliary, DAV, Soldiers Angels, Marine Heritage Organization, National Association for Black Veterans, Women's Marines Association, and Camp Lejeune Contaminated Water, Georgia Military Women and National Rhythm and Blues. And whereas Levita has received many accolades for her work, including being the first veteran to receive the International Trailblazers Award, Veteran of the Year, Citizen of the Year Certificate from the State of Georgia, recognizing over fifty thousand volunteer hours. She has over twenty thousand volunteer hours with the Atlanta VA, where she has volunteered since nineteen ninety-four, and she was awarded the Civil Service Veterans Award. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners recognizes Levita Bennett for her dedication to our nation's veterans and her local community and does hereby proclaim Wednesday, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, as Levita Bennett Appreciation Day in Fulton County.
Good morning, everybody. I'm gonna keep it short and just say thank you.
Spoken like a true soldier. The last proclamation is recognizing Elizabeth Markowitz. Appreciation Day, sponsored by our Commissioner Hall.
Come on, support her. I see you sitting up there. Everyone from the Public Defender's Office that is here. Well, she's not leaving, leaving. I said the same thing. Come on down, everybody in support of her. Everyone here is, Jonathan? No, you come on, you taking pictures for them? You can get in the picture, and Jonathan can take the pictures. Okay, all right. Mm-hmm. Well, it's an honor to present this proclamation. I found out about her retirement when I attended their department event. And they have a wonderful, wonderful mission, unified by purpose. And I think that's awesome. She definitely was unified by purpose to spend as many years as she did in this department. And so the proclamation reads, whereas Elizabeth Markowitz earned her law degree from Emory University School of Law in nineteen ninety and served as editor for the Bankruptcy Developments Journal and formed the Prisoners Legal Aid Project while pursuing her decree. And whereas Elizabeth began her career at the Fulton County Public Defender's Office in November of nineteen ninety. And in her first year of trying cases, she tried eighteen in a row. And whereas Elizabeth and former District Attorney Paul Howard created the Complaint Room, shifting cases from the city of Atlanta to Fulton County so that better case processes could be implemented and cases moved efficiently through the system. She is also a founding member of the Fulton County Mental Health Task Force. And whereas Elizabeth is a supervising attorney and coordinator of the pre-indictment, non-complex, and accountability court divisions of the Atlanta Circuit Public Defender's Office. And she is an adjunct professor at Emory University School of Law and teaches for the National Institute of Trial Advocacy across the country and across the globe. She has also assisted in starting a public defender system in Nassau, Bahamas. And whereas Elizabeth serves annually as a trial instructor with the Kessler-Eitzin Program for Trial Techniques of Emory School of Law. And she serves as a contributing member on projects conducted by the Center for Advocacy and Dispute Resolution at Emory School of Law. Immediately after her retirement from Fulton County, she will work for NITA, Lawyers Without Borders, and Justice Defenders in Africa to teach defendants in custody how to try their own cases in a system that has no public defenders and where ninety-five percent of defendants represent themselves. Excuse me. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners and all associated with the Public Defender's Office recognizes Elizabeth Markowitz for her passion and professionalism over the past thirty-two years of dedicated service and celebrates her and her family on her retirement and does hereby proclaim Wednesday, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, as Elizabeth Markowitz Appreciation Day in Fulton County, Georgia. Thank you for all your service.
It is truly a pleasure to honor you here today. I have certainly had the pleasure over the last twenty-seven years of working with you in the court system. And as a fellow Emory Law alumnus, you know, it is a pleasure to be able to work with someone of your caliber and quality and professionalism. And so thank you so much for your service to the residents of Fulton County.
I just wanna say thank you to everybody. It's been amazing, thirty-two and a half years as a public defender. I grew up here. I raised my kids in the courthouse, sitting on, they were in the jury room, picking a jury. If I had sick kids, they were sitting on my clients' families' laps waiting for verdicts. And as hard as it has been to shift, I wasn't quite ready to give up the county. And so I'm going to be the Chief Strategy Officer for the new Clerk of Court Shay Alexander, and I'm super excited to continue to work with each and every one of you. So thank you.
Good morning. I'm Maurice Kenner, the chief public defender. And Elizabeth, I just wanna thank you for thirty-two years of hard work, of commitment, of leadership. Your talents will be missed from our office, and particularly the excellent training you provided to the newbie attorneys. Thank you.
All right, continue, Madam Clerk.
Mister Chair, for the record, I'd like to join in that last proclamation for Attorney Markowitz as well.
Okay, Madam Clerk. And Commissioner Arrington. Continue, Madam Clerk.
On page eight, Public Hearings. Twenty-three, zero, four, one, three, Public Comment. Citizens wishing to participate in public comment will be allowed to appear in person or may choose to participate virtually via Zoom video conferencing or by submitting their comments in writing online, registering on the county website, Priority for a public comment will be given to Fulton County citizens and those individuals representing businesses or organizations located within Fulton County. Speakers will be granted up to two minutes each. The public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. The public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed thirty minutes. In the event the thirty-minute time limit is reached prior to public comments being completed, public comment will be suspended, and the business portion of the BLC meeting will commence. Public comment will resume at the end of the meeting. Mister Chairman and Members of the Board, we will start with the speakers here in Assembly Hall. We have received thirty-three speaker cards. Will the first five speakers please come down? Brian Dunn, Julie Adams, Julie Allen, Jamie Parish, and Matt Rowenzak.
All right, we have thirty-three speakers. That's an hour and what's that, sixty-six minutes? We got thirty minutes. I've asked some of you to, if you could limit your remarks to less than two minutes, we can accommodate everybody. And if what you're going to say is already been said by someone else, it would be very well appreciated if you would just wave your hand in support, because we're gonna try to accommodate everybody if we can. It's ten nineteen, so first speaker. Also, when you have fifteen seconds left on your two minutes, I'll say fifteen seconds as your key to clue rather to terminate your remarks. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm Brian Dunn, a resident in Fulton County. I'm here today in support of Jason Frazier for the BRE Board Member. The Fulton County BRE is responsible for conducting elections for registered voters. The word "registered" has meaning. This is supposed to be a bipartisan team to give people of the county a balanced and fair system. Instead, it's turned into a partisan circus. We're talking about having fair elections. We're talking about the responsibilities of the BRE and the voter registrations. Jason has been labeled an election denier, a disruptor, conspiracy theorist, interferer, and someone trying to take over elections, all because he brought up bad or questionable registrations. How dare he intrude on your plans? If the people at the BRE did their job and you people were holding them accountable, this wouldn't be a discussion. Fulton weaponized the process and challenged them instead of correcting their clerical errors. Everything Jason is being accused of is what Fulton is doing. You're projecting all your actions on this man. Whenever you point the finger at somebody, you're pointing it at yourself. We, the people of North and South Fulton, are seeing exactly what's going on. You're the ones controlling elections with fraudulent voter rolls. You're not representing us and are not doing the right thing by accusing this man of wanting what we all want, clean voter registrations and eliminate the sham system you're operating. Here's a man that wants to do and help, do the job and help, and some of you don't like it. I challenge anybody in this room to present valid factual-based evidence of any wrongdoings by Jason. Jason has volunteered many hours of his own time doing Fulton County's job investigating voter registrations. No law is broken. It's the law that Fulton County do, which Jason has done. This is significant to Fulton's legitimate voters.
Fifteen seconds.
By supporting this decision, you're supporting illegitimate, bloated, and inaccurate voter registrations. It cancels and diminishes their votes. This is not a fair, balanced system. It's corrupt with deceptions and violations. Before machines, elections used to be one day. After machines, they go for weeks. This is obvious and intentional.
Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Julie Adams. I'm a Fulton County resident. And over this past weekend, I got an opportunity to watch Commissioner Barrett's podcast with her BOC staffer about the nominee for the Fulton County Board of Registrations and Elections. I am referring to the nominee that you guys voted down last meeting. The good news for the nominee, Jason Frazier, is it's not personal. The Board of Commissioners, with Commissioner Barrett leading the way, with encouragement from the lawyer on the Board of Commissioners, will do anything to keep a nominee that understands and follows federal and state election laws off of the BRE. Fulton County currently has a voting age population of seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand people. But currently, our voter rolls have eight hundred and eighty thousand people that are registered to vote. What does that mean? It means that a hundred and twenty-two thousand people that are not legally allowed to vote in Fulton County are on our voter rolls. What does that mean? That this is a hundred and twenty-two thousand reasons for the citizens of Fulton County to lose faith in how our elections are run. Our county has ignored federal law, USC two oh five oh one, and does not regularly maintain our voter rolls and registration lists. Jason Frazier-
Fifteen seconds.
Has the right, as a legal citizen, to help the county maintain accurate voter roll lists. Are you gonna break the Code fourteen thirty-three, which you shall appoint the nominee? Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Julie Allen, and Dana Barrett is my District Three Commissioner. I appeared before you on March fifteenth and stated that it's all about political manipulation with this board and that the public knows your games more than ever. Partisan majorities that abused constituents is why unincorporated areas incorporated to protect themselves from abuse by this board seeking the right to local control to avoid abuse by political majorities that ignore the needs of all Fulton County constituents. You are prime examples that leaders in Fulton County have lost their way in serving the broader constituents and only truly serve yourselves. You manipulate, elect lawbreakers and taxpayer abusers, and you snub our great county in the process for personal power in favor. You've made Fulton County a nationwide joke on elections. All fingers point to politicians like yourselves who don't govern as representatives of the people, by the people, and for the people. Where are you going, Commissioner Arrington?
To the restaurant with that gentleman.
Nadine Williams was so threatened by my personal voter experience observations that she wrote an April sixth memo to this board, the Fulton County Board of Registrations and Elections, and the county manager, to disseminate misinformation with the department response to my comments stating, "The department conducted customer service surveys during the year of twenty twenty-two, and my comments had no basis according to key performance indicators." Why does Ms. Williams spend taxpayer dollars and time to play the misinformation game? I stand before you today to once again call you to rise above being a partisan hack and do your duty, approving Jason Frazier to the Fulton County Board of Elections and Registrations. I'm here to remind you that the definition of "shall" is an order, promise, requirement, or obligation. When it comes to the four partisan board seats, the county commission shall appoint nominations from the chair of each political party as stated in the county ordinance, section fourteen thirty-three. You played your extreme partisanship-
Fifteen seconds.
-in opposing Chairman Pitt's appointment of Lee Morris as Chair of the Fulton County Board of Elections and Registrations, redirecting his nomination to Board of Assessors. It's funny that you trust a respected former colleague with county taxes, but not elections. The June seventh highly partisan no vote-
Thank you.
Shows-
Next speaker.
I'm Jamie Parish from Fulton County. In a recent podcast, Councilwoman Dana Barrett made a pretty big accusation. She proclaimed that the far-right, Trump-allied election deniers are going after boards and registrations and elections in other places other than Fulton. Actually, she used the term "taken over." Barrett went on to call voter challenges ridiculous and equated Mr. Jason Frazier's attempts to clean up voter rolls to voter suppression. But she said she is trying to protect the BRE from the far right. She still needs to give one single reason why she voted against Jason Frazier other than her opinion, no facts. She told an outright lie that most of Mr. Frazier's election challenges were, in her own words, frivolous. That is an outright untruth. The fact is, more than ninety-five percent of Mr. Frazier's challenges were accepted by the Fulton BRE. She tells us on her podcast that she would prefer a Republican volunteer base sort of more akin to the Republicans of yesteryear. To that, I say, tough. Your party's murder of children in the third trimester ruined that. The Democrat Party having trouble with the definition of what a woman is ruined that. Boys and our girls' sports ruined that one, Commissioner Barrett. Fentanyl is pouring over our border, killing our kids. It ruined it. We are not Republicans of yesteryear. We are the Republicans of today. I am holding a petition of nine hundred constituents that agree that Jason Frazier should be appointed. That's nine hundred future campaign volunteers here in Fulton that will make sure all of you partaking in this sham of a nominating process will not be elected in the future.
Fifteen seconds.
She goes on to say on public comment that the public comment section of these meetings, you just can't tune it out. What kind of elected official gets on a podcast and admits that she would tune out her constituents? It's unreal. If you ask me, if the BRE accepted Mr. Frazier's challenges, Ms. Barrett-
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Next five speakers, please come down. Bee Roar, Katie Benson, John Evans, Ginger Bradshaw, and Melissa Ferrilla.
Good morning, Commissioners. Matt Rowenzak. I'm not gonna use my words this morning. I'm gonna use Commissioner Barrett's.
So what is your expectation about the kind of person that they, you know, find suitable for the board?
I mean, look, it's gonna be hard to know what is in the heart and mind of every person that they potentially put up. But they picked somebody, in the case of Jason Frazier, the one who we voted no on, that is very publicly and very openly challenging voter registrations in a frivolous way. You know, has been thrown out of some of the polling places, to my understanding, for being disruptive. He and his wife in particular have done a lot of this type of behavior. And so they are very publicly undermining, in my view, confidence in the elections. And that is intentional.
Commissioner Barrett, you stated it's hard to know what is in the heart and minds- Commissioner Barrett, you stated it's hard to know what is in the heart and minds of every nominee, but all of a sudden you seem to know the intent of Mr. Frazier. Secondly, you're grossly inaccurate in your statements and even slanderous, and then you take it a step further to slander his wife. During your discussion, if you can't name a single voter who has been disqualified or list a single poll that Mr. Frazier or his wife have been thrown out of, then it is clear that you are reckless with your words, you are factually incorrect, and by doing so, you have egregiously misinformed the public and likely your fellow commissioners. That of which is beyond disruptive and surely damaging in terms of trust. You stated Mr. Frazier is not a serious candidate. We now know this is coming from someone lacking in facts and substance.
Fifteen seconds.
Makes contradicting statements and is willing to slander someone's good name and his wife. You are an embarrassment to many in Fulton County, and I'm sure they can't wait to hear your cheap disruptive talking points.
Good morning. Bee Roar, Fulton County resident.
That is intentional. Again, I think for me, it's the disruption. It's the fact that, you know, whether you do like what Jason Frazier is doing or you don't like what Jason Frazier is doing, I think it's very hard to argue that he's not a disruptor. You know, he is purposely disrupting. And in his mind, it's for the good, and I get that. But it's still disruptive. And that is not what a Board of Registration and Elections need. Really, they've done everything very well together. Jason Frazier, I believe, would have been a disruption to that process. And so all I'm looking for is someone who is not a disruptor. As long as they are not somebody who is going to, I believe, undermine our elections...
We have the pleasure of hearing Ms. Commissioner Barrett, in her own words, state, as if she knows or could know, Mr. Frazier's intent. If the commissioner did any amount of sincere homework or research before she spoke, she would clearly understand that is not Mr. Frazier's intent. This only reflects poorly on Commissioner Barrett. It says she is not a reasonable or measured commissioner. Perhaps the commissioner is a total partisan hack interfering and obstructing the nomination process as intended. In that case, Commissioner Barrett ironically is the disruptor. You say you have full respect for the law. Clearly, you do not. If your personal partisan bias deems something quote-unquote disruptive, then the law becomes secondary, according to your own words. What Commissioner Barrett is saying is if something is broken, don't fix it, because that'll be a disruption. We know the phrase, see something, say something? Well, it has to be modified so that Commissioner Barrett would say...
Thank you.
I'm Katie from Fulton County. I would also like to play a piece of the podcast.
Let's just put our nefarious hats on. And, you know, if you're in there and you're trying to do bad, and I'm not saying any one person or even party is...
The goal of that, from the original statute, is to make sure that everybody has equal representation. But when one of the nominees or proposed nominees is about removing representation or just removing the ability of people to vote because, you know, their street name changed from Confederate to something else, it's, you know, we don't have a lot of faith that they're operating in good faith.
Right. So I, when I'm sort of, I agree, I'm glad you brought that up, because I think the point is, I have full respect for the law, and the law says both parties get to nominate people. But this strategy of putting these people into boards of registration and elections who are disruptors, who are going there purposefully to try to make it harder for people to vote, is an unacceptable nomination.
Commissioner Barrett, at the very beginning of the audio, you said you weren't saying any one person or party is trying to do bad with regards to our elections. But later, in your podcast, you and your staffer said exactly that, that Mr. Frazier is purposefully trying to make it harder for people to vote. Are you talking out of both sides of your mouth? Do you know what that means? That usually means people no longer trust what you are saying. You lose credibility.
Fifteen seconds.
At a minimum, you are contradicting yourself, or worse, you are being deceptive and manipulative. Either way, it is not what Fulton County residents expect from their commissioners, especially when you start to defame someone's name.
Next speaker. Next speaker.
I'm John Evans, and I'm a Fulton County resident. I was a software engineer for 30 years for IBM. The number-one responsibility of a data engineer is clean and accurate data. Your responsibility as commissioners is conforming with federal law requiring accurate voter rolls. My coworker at IBM wrote the software for confirming valid addresses for people buying tickets through IBM Events Group, and we're responsible for events such as the U.S. Open and Wimbledon and many others. He simply entered the address, inquired the service, and validated the address. Services like this are available that you could use to validate your data. Commissioner Barrett is concerned that citizens are having to take their time to fix errors in Fulton County's data. The reason that citizens have to waste their time is because you commissioners have failed to appoint BRE that creates a process to require accurate data. I suggest you confirm Jason Frazier, an engineer, to fix your process rather than lawyers to defend your failures.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Ginger Bradshaw, and I live in Sandy Springs. Ms. Barrett, I listed, I listened to part of your podcast from last week. First, I want to say that I am not an unhinged radical who's taking over the Republican Party. I adhere to the values I was raised on: love God, love people, treat others as you want to be treated, be honest, tell the truth, and seek truth. I hope all of you will listen today to truth backed by evidence. I referenced one of Mr. Frazier's emails dated 1/16/23 that accompanied one of his submissions. He specifically stated, "Some of his submissions are likely clerical errors that could be corrected without creating a burden on the registrant." Does that sound like voter suppression to you? It's just getting people, if they ask for an absentee ballot, it'll come to the correct address. Secondly, there are ghost registrations that increase the cost to the county. Last time, I brought in a picture of an abandoned home that had 20 registrants to it. Obviously, nobody was living there. And I know you know that these ghost registrants cost the county money in having increased polling places, increased staff, increased machines. And that's why a lot of the cities are pulling out. Milton is going to do their own elections because they don't want to pay your fee for people that are not legal voters. So what I ask is that, I know you're all smart people, and so I'm sure you get the picture. Look at the evidence of what is before you and look for truth, not an agenda. Don't we all want accurate voter rolls, correct addresses?
Fifteen seconds.
So someone can get an absentee ballot if needed? No out-of-state voters, only registrants at residences per law? Every legal vote to count? If so, Mr. Frazier has the skills to help direct our election process. Thank you.
Next five speakers. Mia Corsten, Maria Guardio, Paul Hershey, Harry Parker, and Dr. Rosalyn Gamble.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Melissa Fiorello, a Fulton County resident, and I have a little bit of the Spirits podcast.
We were setting a bad precedent by doing something that had really not been done in the past. And, you know, I, my response to that when I spoke was, we are not setting a dangerous precedent. We are doing our job and well within our rights to do that job. Not only in our rights, but we are expected to do our job. The dangerous precedent here was being set by the Republican Party by sending us someone whose intent was fully to disrupt our elections.
You have set a dangerous precedent, Commissioner Barrett. You appear unable to separate your bias and misinformed opinions. You skip over the law, and worse, you make defamatory statements yet again about Mr. Frazier. Should I quote you and say, "Democracy is at stake"? The more you talk, the more radical it appears you are. You have done a great disservice to the public and to this board. If I was a fellow commissioner, I would not want to associate with this type of reckless and unethical behavior. I'm asking this board today to follow the law and vote yes for Mr. Frazier. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Mia Corsten, resident of Fulton County. And first of all, thank you, Commissioner Ellis, for disrupting your vacation and coming here to be part of this important vote. Commissioner Barrett, you talk about the need for more measured and reasonable people to get involved in the Board of Elections, but implying that Mr. Frazier is neither of the two. Well, I have some questions for you then. Is it measured and reasonable to reappoint two board members who recertified an election with zero results or documentation in front of them? Is it measured or reasonable to reappoint a board member who likely interfered with the conduct of an election, which is a crime? Is it measured and reasonable to throw out your fellow commissioners under the bus if you don't agree, if they don't agree with you? Is it measured and reasonable to slander Mr. Frazier's name when you clearly have no idea what his intent is, despite Mr. Frazier stating it publicly multiple times, including via email to the Board of Registrations? Based on your actions, it appears you are anything but measured and reasonable, yet you spew the need for more of it. I'd also like to add, I've worked the past four elections, including the 19 days of advanced voting, with Lucia Frazier, which is where I got to know her. She was never, ever thrown out of a polling location. She is a good citizen, along with her husband, and I implore you to vote yes to Jason's nomination. Thank you.
Maria Guardio, Fulton County. Not working. This was more information from our very own Hanoi Hannah, Dana Barrett, on her propaganda cast, but I can't get it to work. You know, you have to read the law first. I would appreciate you looking me in the eye also. You haven't looked at anybody in the eye. You're obviously, you're obviously sulking in your own embarrassment, and you should be embarrassed, because you've lied and you've propagandized facts. There's nothing wrong with Mr. Frazier. He's just very good at what he does. I would like to thank Julie Adams for pointing out that there was a total of 122,000 illicit registrations. And last time I was here, I pointed out that at $37 per registrant, that really comes out to $4.5 million wasted money. If you divide that by 250 people per BMR machine, that comes out to 448 useless BMR machines at approximately $4,000 each. That's $2 million for a total of $6.5 million wasted because the voter rolls are not clean. I would also like to say that, you know, this county has had quite enough embarrassment, losing two hospitals. You may have also heard that Governor Kemp implored the global health, global digital passport. So he wants to use the airport and take it over. Do we have to lose an airport?
Next speaker.
Paul Hershey, Fulton County. Good morning, Vietnam. Commissioner Barrett, get off the phone, please. Have the integrity to look your constituents in the eye. Number two, this is a two-party system, and you don't have the right to challenge another party's position on who they're going to put on the Board of Elections. The word "shall" indemnifies the code. Number three, what you're trying to do is level the playing field, so you five up there have got constituents, and excuse me, other commissioners, get off the phone. I'm talking. The bottom line is, you don't even pay any attention to what your constituents are talking about. The law is very clear: "shall." That means you will, indefinitely, period. And you're getting bad advice from an attorney sitting on the council, and you're sitting, and you're getting bad advice from your county attorney. Number three, your DA is more involved with her Clean Slate Initiative instead of indicting the people that should be indicting, instead of trying to keep your job, do your job. Get off your butts and do your job.
Next speaker.
I'm Harry Parker, Roswell, Georgia, Fulton County. The thing that I have to say is just simply that fraud happens. And there are a number of convictions, ex-Democratic congressmen sentenced to 30 months in prison in Pennsylvania. There's others in Arizona. There's others, there's a Republican in North Carolina. So fraud happens. This isn't, you know, some mystical thing. It's intentional, and people are caught, but after the fact. So the idea here is, let's put a fence at the top of the hill instead of an ambulance at the bottom. Let's clean the voter rolls, and then each individual voter that is a legal voter can vote one time. That is, that's a simple argument. And I just encourage you all, you know, with the words of Jesus, when he was being held in front of basically a Gestapo organization saying that he was, basically had a demon, simply because he healed someone on the Sabbath, a very, you know, honorable thing, judged harshly. And his words were, "Stop judging by mere appearances and make a right judgment." Please honor this request of the Republican Party and put, and seat Jason where he belongs on the BRE. Thank you.
Call the next five speakers.
Next five speakers. Pam Phoebe Eckert, David Calhoun, Alexa Feen, Lucia Frazier, and Christine Pross.
Go ahead.
I'm Dr. Rosalyn Gamble. I'm a resident of Roswell, Fulton County, and I don't speak very often, and I don't know, and I don't know any of you, but I've been watching and listening to everything that's been going on. Dana, I listened to your discussion that you had with Preston Thomas, and I am in total agreement with you. The accusations and name-calling is very disrespectful, from the attack on Ms. Thorne to the attack on Mr. Frazier, and it needs to stop. It accomplishes nothing but anger and division. We all need to work together. You're correct. You said that citizens should get involved and engaged. Well, here we are. We're here. Yes, I agree, elections should be secure, free, and fair, and instill confidence that the officials are doing their job. You all have to agree that our voter rolls are not up to par, and there are too many errors. In my opinion, I expect that yours are also, that this is way too many errors and it's totally unacceptable. We need to clean our voter rolls. Mr. Frazier has been chosen by the Republican Party to be their representative to the election board. He meets all the qualifications, and the only thing I keep hearing are preconceived accusations that there would be a disruption. I understand the concern, but it takes a lot of time to do these corrections since there are so many. But it's outrageous, there are so many to begin with. Right now, we need to protect our elections. We need to clean our voter rolls with balanced power between the Republicans and the Democrat on the board. By all the rules, the representatives have submitted their choice to you, and Mr. Frazier should be accepted. And I just want to say, I think it's unacceptable, even as you, Ms. Barrett, asked, you shouldn't come here with your minds made up, which I think might be the case. Mr. Frazier, as we all are, is only interested in the voter rolls being cleaned up so that we can have fair elections. we can have fair elections. And thank you for being here.
Next speaker.
Good morning, I'm Pam Phoebe Eckert, and I am a resident of Fulton County. I wanted to ask you a few questions. Do numbers lie? Does corruption win? Does greed reign? Are you hearing what's being said here today? What is justice? And do you, as a commissioner, believe in justice? What is wrong? And do you, as a commissioner, believe in right? What is deception? And do you, as a commissioner, believe in obeying our Georgia Constitution to the letter of the law? It says "shall." We really want, as we, the people, we'd like to have Jason help us with the voter rolls. We'd really like you to vote in a right way on this issue. I appeal to your sense of right here to do the right thing. And I'd really like it if you'd look at me and do the right thing.
David Callahan, resident of Fulton County, city of South Fulton. As I stand before you, I don't believe that any of you would pull a gun and rob me on the street. I doubt that you would break into my home and take my belongings. But what I discovered from your recent vote on the nomination of Jason Frazier is that this body would allow me and many others to be robbed of our vote. As we all understand, the easiest way to cast a fraudulent vote and thereby cancel an individual's legitimate vote is with a ghost voter, a duplicate voter registration or a voter registration which has no legitimate voter. I mentioned the last time I was here that I had a voter come before me at election time with three registrations. One had been canceled, so I don't know if that one had been voted. But the other two registrations had both been voted in the 2020 presidential election. That means that somebody's legitimate vote was canceled. Someone's vote was stolen from them without their knowledge. Of the many thousands of ghost voters that Mr. Frazier identified, and thousands more as a result of his efforts, the question remains, how many of those illegitimate registrations were voted, and how many honest, legitimate voters had their voter stolen? I don't know the person's name whose vote was canceled in that situation, there's no way to know, and I don't know for whom the fraudulent vote was cast. Nevertheless, someone made the effort to vote, and because of this, and other government bodies who vehemently protest dirty voter rolls being cleaned up, at least one honest voter was disenfranchised. Jason Frazier was offended, some of you, by helping to clean up the mess at his Fulton County election rolls.
Thank you. Next speaker. Madam Clerk, how many more?
My name is Alexa Feeney, and I'm a resident of Fulton County. And Commissioner Barrett, I don't see myself as a far-right individual. Corruption does not discriminate, and it is well and alive in both parties. And only people that have courage are going to be the ones to expose it on both sides, and we have to all work together to do that. You proclaimed on your podcast that Georgia Republicans put forth an untrustworthy candidate. You claim most of Jason Frazier's errors were not accurate. If his data was inaccurate, then why did the board prove about 97% of his findings? It seems that you were the one that were being inaccurate and actually misleading the public on this issue. I must say, it was convenient that the AJC did a hit piece on Jason right before the vote, and it gave some an excuse to vote him down or not vote at all. And somebody should look into that. Several on the board refer to us as election deniers. Well, what about truth deniers? Do we have people here that are denying the truth or refuse to see the truth? Commissioner Barrett referred to us as the far-right, and we are exposing this corruption on both sides, like I said. And Jason and his wife are both extremely ethical and hard-working people. It was said that he was a disruptor for the election board. I recall maybe three public comments last time referring to his disruption, and actually the disruption was that he made them actually have to do extra work. Well, that's what they're paid to do, and that's a very weak argument, him doing their job was making them do their job. If you had courage, you would agree that we have election issues, especially right after the findings of the recent Haldeman report. Several states shut down voting, all at the same time on election night. States changed their voting systems and their laws right before the 2020 election. Not to mention the private funding, the Zucker bucks, and the mail-in ballots. If you don't have eyes to see, then don't blame us for trying to open yours. If you won't find what you don't look for, you're never going to find it. Jason was working to secure our elections for all Fulton County on the left.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Lucia Frazier, Fulton County. Did you guys listen to the March 16, 2023 BRE meeting? That was the day that a lot of people showed up because they got challenge letters. Did you listen to my public comment that day? Because that's the real truth. And I spoke to a lot of those people. And if more people knew the truth, they would praise what we've been doing. My public comment that day was applauded by all those people. Why? Because I enlightened them. And here's what I said. Registrations with wrong addresses were submitted with corrections and no need to challenge. The county chose to send threatening challenge letters, needlessly upsetting people. Even worse, they didn't put in the letter that you could just update your information online. And I told those folks that. Instead, Fulton chose and essentially forced them to show up in person, stand on their backs, using them like background actors to stage a scene. That's the truth. And these people thanked us at the end. So let's stop going back and saying we're hurting people, because we're not. And when they know the truth, they understand it, they appreciate it.
Christine Probst, Atlanta resident, District 3. I'm here to support the appointment of Jason Frazier. Mr. Frazier's actions have directly led to the recent efforts by the Registration Division to maintain our voter rolls. We should be cheering these efforts to ensure voters are registered at the correct address and that Fulton is not wasting money on non-existent voters. Here's an example of what Mr. Frazier wrote to the Registration and BRE members, and I quote. "Please note that for the addresses where I suspected clerical errors, I investigated and added 'should be.' My hope is that you can further investigate those suspected clerical errors and correct them without creating a burden on the registrant." So you heard just before me at that hearing, people came forward because they got these confusing letters. Even worse, some called the phone number that was on the letter, and it was disconnected or the wrong number. Others got through and they got the wrong information. So it wasn't Jason Frazier that sent the challenge letters, he offered to help. He even went so far as to find the correct addresses to provide to Fulton County. It was Fulton County, not Jason Frazier, that dragged those poor people in here. And Lucia's right, once they got here and they understood that there was a good faith effort to correct their addresses, but no follow-through from Fulton County to help them correct those addresses and resolve the issues, that's where it became a big mess. And I realize that challenges are ugly and painful, but your frustration over those challenges is directed at the wrong person. He really has truly tried to help the situation. Most, if not all, of those hearings could have been avoided.
Fifteen seconds.
Ms. Barrett described this as disruptive, but it has led to needed changes that will benefit voters and the county. As your constituent, I am asking you to vote yes for Mr. Frazier. He is honest, kind, hard-working, and smart, and I know he will work.
Next five speakers, Christopher Hayden, Deborah Alexander, Teresa Rhodes, Michael Gordon, and Mike Russell.
Michael Gordon, Fulton County resident. I am here to support Jason Frazier as a Republican nominee for the BRE. The Fulton County voter rolls have been grossly inaccurate for years. Among other things, the BRE is responsible for maintaining accurate voter registration records, but they have failed miserably at doing this essential job, which is required by law. And yet, this Board of Commissioners has just reappointed several of these law deniers. Along comes Jason Frazier, challenging many suspect registration records and identifying duplicates, approximately 30,000 issues in total. And the BRE has agreed with Jason on nearly all of these issues. The Board of Commissioners has recently appointed those who failed to do their job, while at the same time, they refused to appoint Jason Frazier, who has helped the BRE to get the job done. Therefore, as a body, this Board of Commissioners is obstructing the law by voting to ensure the registration records remain inaccurate. Pure evil should be disrupted every time. So thank you, Jason the Disruptor. I pray the good residents of Fulton County, both above and below I-20, vote to disrupt the political careers of every commissioner who fails to vote today for accurate voter registration records.
Christopher Hayden from Fulton County. I'm here to support Jason Frazier. I'd like to play some more of Commissioner Barrett's podcast.
...the local districts, right, to try to force more and more Democrats into smaller areas so that there are more and more Republican seats available, so to speak. And that strategy's been going on for a number of years. And look, people on the other side will say, well, Democrats do it too, and we've seen that in New York, for example. But on the whole, these Republican strategies have, the Democrats sort of play catch-up on all these strategies. You know what I mean? Like, we sort of do it back.
They wait for somebody to cross the Rubicon before they get in the boat and start crossing it too.
Right. It's like, they do it, and they do it, and they do it, and they start to have success at that. Finally, we say, oh, no, we've got to fight that.
Commissioners, here you have it. You have a commissioner that is inserting her own personal, albeit inaccurate, opinion into the process, which is not how this ordinance is written, nor is it the intent of the law. If Republican commissioners used her approach, they would vote no for the Democrat nominees. By your logic, you should resign, Commissioner Barrett, because I do not believe you're a serious commissioner. You're very disruptive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Deborah Alexander. I was born and raised in southwest Fulton County, longtime resident. Commissioners of Fulton County, you represent all of the citizens of Fulton County, and I assume you respect all of our rights and rules, and you follow the code of ethics. We're here once again to tell you that we want Jason Frazier as one of the Republican representatives on the BOE, as we are allowed to do. We urge you to confirm him today. This is our right, and you should respect that right, no matter whether you're a Democrat or Republican. That should make no difference here, especially if you're here to fairly represent all of the citizens of Fulton County. Jason has shown to be effective and productive in the correct and fair voting process by weeding out incorrect or fraudulent votes. Isn't that what the BOE should be doing? Or is this just a kangaroo court? By the way, that means a court that ignores recognized standards of law or justice, in case you don't know.
Good morning, I'm Teresa Rhodes, Fulton County resident. I'm here to speak in support of the appointment of Jason Frazier to the BRE. First of all, I do want to thank you commissioners for serving your constituents of Fulton County. I serve on a municipal board, and I know that the workload extends beyond this assembly. To those of you who do your homework and you come prepared for healthy debate, your efforts do not go unnoticed. Thank you for that. But I wonder if one assignment may have been missed. None of you reached out to Jason Frazier in good faith to share with him your concerns or what bothers you. You didn't interview him, you didn't give him an opportunity to address those concerns. I don't know if this lack of engagement is by mandate or by choice. In either case, I have to ask why. If by mandate, that would signal to me that the approval of his appointment shall be automatic. If it's by choice, then that calls into question your capacity to make your vote objectively. Commissioner Barrett, we've heard a lot of your comments today, and I would assume that there's no off-ramp for you to change your mind. You have put the gas, the pedal to the metal, full speed, you're going to miss an off-ramp. For Chairman Pitts and the others, take the next off-ramp. Look for the sign for your party allegiance.
Fifteen seconds.
And abstain if you cannot vote yes. Thank you.
Next five speakers, Nick Cooper, Rhonda Sales, Reverend Lydia Meredith, Stephanie Ali, and Patty Nathan.
Good morning, my name is Mike Russell, and I'm a resident of Fulton County, and I'm appalled at what seems to be becoming a pattern here on this board with these personal attacks, these crass, baseless attacks. First, it was against Commissioner Thorne, and now against Mr. Frazier, and it needs to stop. I think we all agree that that podcast now was not a good idea, and it should be a warning to others to stop with these personal attacks and stick to the facts. I've heard people use the term "disrupter" because somebody challenged what happened in the election. Did anybody here, did anybody in this room fix their lips to call Stacey Abrams a disruptor when she took an election, would not concede, and took it all the way to federal court and lost? Was she a disruptor? Was Al Gore, who challenged a presidential election, worked to have veterans like me, who was a resident of Florida at the time, our votes not counted as absentee voters, and went all the way to the Supreme Court? When the Supreme Court said that he was wrong and certified the election, was he a disruptor? It seems to be a word that's used only for one side of the aisle, and it is wrong. And I implore you to follow the law. I don't understand how you could be a sworn officer of the state and not follow the written, clear, in English, law that says "shall." What about "shall" do you not understand?
Fifteen seconds.
I said it when I was here the last time about these scurrilous, personal attacks. It's not over until you apologize and do the right thing, and it is not over.
Come on, sir, let's go. Couple more words from Commissioner Dana Barrett.
Well, I have to first give a shout-out to the, I want to say it was four or five public commenters who were there for other reasons and stuck it out.
Yeah, great, great.
So shout-out to all of them for their patience as they waded through a lot of this other public comment around the Board of Registration and Elections. So all of the folks that wanted to speak about the Board of Registration and Elections, particularly from the right, shall we say, came and signed up at 9:00. And so, there were, you know, thirty-some-odd people who got in line before some of these four or five other folks who had to then wait. They drove all the way down there, they parked their cars, you know, they had to wait for their turn to speak. I've said this on some of our recordings before, but one of the hardest things to do, I think, is to sit through public comment. Most people come down, and they just sort of say the same thing over and over again. So, you have forty people getting up one by one, saying the same thing. Some of them will make a slightly different point, some of them will... You know, sometimes there's a pro and con, there's a lot of people for, a lot of people against, you know, but the pros and cons are generally making the same arguments. And so, it's very repetitive, and you're sitting through it for a long time. Yeah, and so, anyway, that is all very weird.
Commissioners, do you also believe it is, quote, "very weird" for folks to give public comment? Is it exhausting for y'all to have to listen to your constituents? Commissioner Barrett picks out a few of the public commenters from the last meeting and gives them a shout-out for having to drive all the way down here and for being so patient. Can you tell yet how blatantly obvious her partisan nature is? Surely, quote, "those on the right," as she so lovingly refers to them, "didn't have to drive all the way down here. Surely, they didn't have to be patient or take the time off from work." I'm starting to wonder if Commissioner Barrett is right for the job when she talks about Fulton County constituents in this manner. Does she also believe in voters not having a voice? The commissioners who continue to vote against Mr. Frazier to the Board of Registration and Elections are turning a formality into a circus, and y'all are the clowns.
I'm Rhonda Sales, Fulton County resident, and I have some more comment from Commissioner Barrett, which just needs to be advanced.
Registration and Elections needed to be either, you know, appointed or reappointed by the end of this month. And so, we had all four of them on our agenda, and one in particular was really in question. There was this article in the Atlanta Journal-Constitution that talked about this particular guy who has brought something like 9,000-plus voter registration challenges, most of them which were, you know, proven to be frivolous and not relevant. And a lot of them were very disruptive, not only to the department, but to the people. You know, there were people who were... The only problem with their voter registration is, like, the DR for "drive" in their street name was repeated, so it said DR and then DR again. And those people had their voter registration challenge, they had to fight that, you know. He really has been very disruptive to the elections process, and we... Most of us on the board did not want to see him in that role.
Commissioner Barrett said that Mr. Frazier's voter registration challenges were proven to be frivolous and not relevant. So, you think it's frivolous that the voters have to give a real address? I disagree. I thought you had full respect for the law. Counties are supposed to review their voter roll for accuracy according to state law.
Fifteen seconds, ma'am.
You say it's disruptive, informing the county of inaccuracy, which clearly were not being addressed in accordance with the law. No one agrees that this is acceptable, and neither does Mr. Frazier. Sorry about that. I don't know how that happened.
Next speaker. Next speaker. Come on, ma'am.
Okay. Didn't want to go without the timer. Hi, I'm Stephanie Ali. Thank you, Commissioners. I am the Policy Director for New Georgia Project and have been doing election protection in Georgia since 2014, and even was across the state for an election just yesterday. I want to just add a couple of corrections. Yes, Mr. Frazier was forcibly removed by police from a polling place. He talked about this himself in public... He talked about this himself in a public comment for a Board of Elections meeting in May of 2022. He mentioned it. So, I'll say, in nearly ten years of doing election protection at over... With over 7,500 volunteers and 500 sites, never had someone removed by police. Have had people mistakenly told the wrong thing, that they couldn't be present as public, but never had that happen. But you can look it up on the... When is it? The 12th of May, 2022, where he talked about that himself. Mr. Frazier does brag about his attempts to purge thousands of Georgia voters from the rolls and lies about his justifications for doing so. It's clear he has no interest in upholding Democratic principles because he's out here bragging about the voters he's removing from the rolls. Voters who were...
Excuse me, Stephanie. Excuse me. Listen, now, we've listened patiently to everything that's been said. She has the microphone now, so please be patient and courteous to her. Continue.
Thank you, sir. So, I will say, like, we've heard the percentage of people that have been removed from the rolls that Mr. Frazier mentioned, and this is because Fulton was working on investigating and cleaning their rolls, something that the State Election Board confirmed just yesterday because they removed or approved Fulton after a two-year investigation for, quote-unquote, "corrected procedures and training." So, thank you again, Commissioners, for your work. We, again, oppose this nomination and look forward to your vote. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Next three speakers.
Please pick anyone out that makes another outburst like that. Come on, Commissioner.
Good morning. I'm Patty Nathan. I'm a Fulton County resident and have lived in Sandy Springs for almost forty years. I attended monthly BRE meetings in person for two years before the pandemic, then virtually since March 2020. During that time, I observed firsthand each board member advocate for fair and free elections. They consistently worked to make voting equally accessible from the northern part of the county to the southern part of the county. I've also witnessed challenges to voter rolls that were particularly frivolous, and most of those came from Jason Frazier. The late John Lewis was a proponent of good trouble. Frazier's challenges are nothing but bad trouble. Despite all the bad trouble, the Republican Party nominated him again. We need board members interested in election integrity, not a provocateur like Jason Frazier. His census attacks on the voting rolls unnecessarily wasted tens of thousands of dollars in valuable staff time. Mr. Frazier has clearly demonstrated with his many absurd challenges that he is not interested in effective election governance. You were right to reject Jason Frazier once. Please do it again. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Last three speakers. Sabrina Jones, John Nance, and Lori Altman.
That's it.
Good morning to everyone. Ever live the latest in...
We can't hear a word yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Welcome back. Oh, Commissioner Aaronson, how you doing?
Doing good.
Just good. I come to y'all first, I have a Mother Day, Happy Father Day to everyone, to all of y'all. And I want to say, God bless America. My other thing is here, I hear everybody talk about voter rights. I say, I was coming back. Yes, I'm coming back like Congress Lewis. I'm coming back like Dr. Martin Luther King, and I'm going to keep marching for my rights and everything else too. And before I get started, thank y'all, whatever y'all play a part in with Martin Luther. Thank y'all for the seats that they have out there on the city, for the senior citizen and everything that y'all have contributed with Martin Luther on that end right there. I also come to y'all right here with this. On May the 12th, I went to Wright Street Jail. What I noticed when I came out of there was a rope hanging from the jail down to other inmates' windows, calling for stuff to go in the bag, up the window. And the first thing that came to my mind was, did this inmate get stabbed for whatever they dragging out their window? Or is the officer them getting hurt because a rope going out the window into other inmates' cell? And y'all coming here and y'all telling these... Letting us know the officer getting hurt. Family letting y'all know the inmates are getting hurt. But May the 12th, a rope hanging out of there, and I came to 55 Trade District.
All right, fifteen seconds, ma'am.
That it was a rope hanging out the jail. So, before I go, hold on.
Thank you. How many? You said three more. How many more?
We have two speakers on Zoom.
All right. Two in the... Two here. Come on up. These are the last two.
Hi, my name is John Nance. I'm a Fulton County resident, and I would like to address the issue around the appointment of Mr. Frazier to the Board of Registrations and Elections. It's my understanding that the chairperson for the Republican Party for Fulton County has the right and authority to appoint Mr. Frazier to the Board of Registrations and Elections under rules governing this appointment. I believe it is outrageous that this appointment has been obstructed and delayed by this board for frivolous and unsupportable reasons, and clearly which violate the appointment process. I respectfully request Mr. Frazier be appointed to the Board of Registrations and Elections today without delay. Thank you.
Just two things that I'd like to just say. One is that Jason, to correct this other woman that was talking, Jason was never allowed into the polling place, so he was never kicked out. So, that was not right. That was number one. And number two is that the thousands of hours that Jason has spent going over these voter rolls has been volunteer, so it has not cost the county any money. So, that was another correction. Good morning, guys. You guys are powerful. Your decisions have created a whole host of issues for our state and our nation. Because of your decisions, we are in wars, more crime, inflation, and the list goes on and on. It doesn't matter where they live, what party they belong to, their race or sex, people will continue to be struggling. They will struggle, and that is because of the decisions of many of you. What are we doing to our country? Well, Jason Frazier has decided to do something to help rather than sit back and watch. A father, husband, and engineer with a busy life and decided to make a priority, make it a priority, and has volunteered hundreds, if not thousands, of hours to find a solution. And instead of legislating voter trust, he has decided to help create it. There are valid reasons people don't trust the voting system here in Georgia. His lists are valid and not frivolous. Those who put DR instead of "drive" are not on his list of being frivolous. Those are... Those people are dead, voted twice or more, voted in several states...
Fifteen seconds.
... or counties, fake voters, et cetera. They are on his list with proof. And then, I'm not going to talk about the podcast, but I am going to say that if Jason Frazier is a disruptor, I guess you could say Martin Luther King was a disruptor. Same for Martin Luther...
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we'll have two speakers on Zoom.
All right. First person to speak is Ben Howard.
Greetings, one and all. Ben Howard, Senior Advocate Public Policy Analyst. Obide me, please, as I ruminate about what close matters might be exposed during Housing Authority Transparency Reports. Report: Who benefited by the Housing Authority trip to Washington, D.C.? And why did that one Housing Authority Commissioner personally receive an autographed copy of the book authored by the guest speaker at that 90th Convention of the National Association of Housing and Residential Officers? Report: Update on the $700,000 worth of Housing Authority requests for reimbursement, which have not been honored by HUD. And what about that OIG investigation by HUD? Report: Update on the concern expressed by one Housing Commissioner when she asked what will happen to residents impacted by the Housing Authority's refusal for funds to cover elevator repairs? And what about the presiding officers' vocalization about being, quote, "disrespected"? Stay tuned, folks.
The next person to speak is Meg Gia. Meg Gia. Okay, the last to speak is Kevin Mordani.
Commissioner Barrett, you said it well on your podcast. Your opposition to Jason Frazier is partisan. This partisan opposition to Jason's installation on the board is based on emotion and completely void of facts. Let's examine the facts. Jason exposed thousands of inaccurate voter registrations. The BRE then went out and hired a third party to examine those same voter rolls. Result: Oh, boy, the BRE was shown by the third party. There's another 48,000 bad registrations. Fact: The BRE then removed those 48,000 illegitimate registrations and fired their own head of registration. Sounds like Jason may be on to something. Commissioner Barrett, you also mentioned in your podcast that the board members must support and instill confidence in the BRE. That confidence must be earned. You have taken steps to... They have taken steps to fix the process, as I mentioned, removing those 48,000 illegitimate registrations and firing the person responsible for the current state of those bloated rolls. A step in the right direction, but much more must be done. Yes, that confidence and respect needs to be earned, not just blindly pledged. We need a board member that understands processes and understands the value to the voting public of maintaining clean voter roll. The opposition to Mr. Frazier that has got you guys all freaked out amounts to a petulant child screaming to get their way, completely emotional and void of any facts. Jason has not challenged any single voter. What he has done is challenged many illegitimate voter registrations and challenged the Department of Elections and Registration to improve their process and become a department worthy of our confidence. With that in mind...
Fifteen seconds.
With that in mind, he's the perfect candidate to install on the board and help guide us through the process of creating an apartment we can all be proud of. Thank you very much, Commissioners, for all your work and listening to our great arguments.
That concludes the Zoom public comments.
No further speakers.
No further speakers.
Yes, no.
All right. Commissioner Aaron, you seek recognition?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right, continue, Madam Clerk.
Item that was moved up today on page 12, 230387. Board of Registration and Elections, the Fulton County Republican Party has nominated Jason Frazier for a full board appointment to a term ending June 30th, 2025.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. Comments? Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to call the question. All right, question's been called. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, promptly move to the second. Let's vote on the call of the question.
And the vote is open on call to question. And the motion passes. Five yeas, two nays.
All right, back to the main motion on the floor, which is to approve. Let's vote.
And the vote is open on the motion to approve. And the motion fails. Two yeas, five nays.
All right, is there a motion to deny? Is there a motion to deny?
Motion to deny.
All right, I'll second. Let's vote on the motion to deny. To deny. Yes, sir. Commissioner Ellis? Vice Chair Ellis?
Well, I think Commissioner Thorne is in the queue, actually.
Commissioner Thorne, sorry.
Can I speak on?
Yes.
I want to thank everybody for coming down here. It means a lot to me that your voices are being heard. I'm disappointed that we, as commissioners, have not had conversations. I reached out to Ms. Stephanie Ali. I had my staff give her my card. I wanted to meet with her, but there's no talking. They don't want to talk about it. It saddens me. As commissioners, we want to save cost, yet when it comes to the bloated voter rolls that we've had, historically had, we don't want to save cost. We, by law, have to have one ballot marking device for every 250 voters. If we have extra voters on our list, we're paying for that, not only for that BMD. We're paying for the printer that goes with it. We're paying for the cabinet, those... We're paying for the cabinet, those $2 million-plus-dollar cabinets we buy. We're paying to have it logic and accuracy tested. We're paying for the software on it. We're paying Dominion to uphold those things. We're paying for all the precincts that we have to have with 2,000 voters. So if we were logical and not hypocrites, we would want voter rolls clean. We would want voter rolls clean to prevent voter suppression. How on earth is somebody who's living on Lee Street on an overpass going to get his absentee ballot? How are people going to know what precincts are accurately going to be put in the GIS system? How are we going to inform voters when we need to mail out precinct cards if they're not even getting them? And by the way, we refuse to send them out, even though we did redistricting. What happens to all those returned cards? Do we remove them off the list? Not that I'm aware of. Are we being hypocrites, I ask? Are we being hypocrites that the law states, the National Voting Rights Act law states that we must have clean voter lists? We must maintain that they must be accurate and current? That we just throw the law out? Are we being hypocrites? Are we being illogical? That's what I know. So you go to the State Board of Elections meeting. Fulton County is like every other thing on there, but yet you say, "Trust us. We're not doing anything wrong." Oh, yes, people bend over backwards to defend us, yet we have consent decrees, letters of instructions. We have two people that illegally shredded voter registrations. Yes, Fulton County, some fellow employee turned them in and did the right thing, and now those two people have been sent on, not only to the AG Chris Carr, but also to Fonny Willis for possible criminal investigation. But we're supposed to just trust the system. We're just supposed to trust, and we only want one side to have who they think needs to be on this board, and the other side, oh, no. They're voter suppression. They're election denier, and the new one, I guess, is disruptor. There were 94 people who got the wrong combo style on their ballot in the State Board of Elections meeting yesterday. That was 94 on the absentee because we failed to even look and check the absentee ballots. No telling how many actually went to the precinct and voted with the wrong combo style. Whose fault is that? People were denied the right ballot. They were denied the right to vote, who they needed to vote for. You know, you talk about Jason being thrown out. Well, that was a total lie, total lie. As a precinct manager for nine years, 101, the public has a right to come in before the polls open and monitor the opening and the closing of the polls after the last voter has voted. The public, not a poll watcher, not a poll worker. You don't have to have any certification, Joe Schmo, anybody out of state, whoever can come in and observe. Jason Frazier did that. The manager, Margaret Williams, called the police on him for doing that. Called the police. Is that not harassment? Oh, and what does Fulton County Elections do? They promote Margaret Williams to be an instructor. Yes, our elections director verified that fact after I heard it at a public comment. We don't want to follow the laws. Here we have people on the Board of Registration and Elections who don't even have any numbers to approve, yet they're certifying elections. Seems logical that you'd want to know what the count was before you certified an election. You want to know that Jason had challenges approved, yet they were Board of Elections members who refused to approve it? Erin Johnson, they were accepted. Our elections department said that these needed to be removed, and we had Erin Johnson say, "No, I don't think so. I know better. I would prefer to break the law." So I hope you understand the frustration, the pure frustration. I would love to have a conversation. I'd love to sit down with my fellow commissioners. I'd love to work together. I'd love- I've sent things out trying to explain my situation. I've gotten nothing back because we work for all of Fulton County. We don't work just for the Democrat Party. We don't work just for the Republican Party. We work for everybody in this county, and only by everybody having representation on who they seem fit on that board are we going to restore trust in our elections. We don't need somebody who is supported by Fair Fight and activist, a far-left activist group, to be dictating who and who does not be on our board. We need iron, sharpening iron. We need you all coming down here, and I would love if you disagree with me in any way, shape, or form, or anything I said is a falsehood up here. I speak truth, and in my faith, my God, my Savior wants me to speak truth out here. And I know it's a little uncomfortable. It's a little uncomfortable for some people to hear, but that's my purpose of being here, and my purpose is to serve you, even those of you who don't agree with me. That's why I want to reach out to you. I want to come to some understanding, some logical understanding, understanding your side. Two minutes isn't enough down here. I'd rather have a face-to-face conversation. I've tried to answer emails. I can't keep up with the form emails that all go to my spam. I only had one Democrat email that came across my regular email, and I tried to respond respectfully. I want conversation. We need conversation. We cannot be divided anymore. We can't be divided, Republican and Democrat. We can't take the hard road of no. So I just beg you guys to honor the wishes of the Republican Party and who they seem fit to run this office. Thank you.
Vice Chair Ellis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just had a question first before I made a couple remarks. The motion that you- this motion that's on the floor right now is a motion to deny.
Correct.
We just- there was our previous vote, you know, to approve, which obviously did not pass. What is the effect of this motion if it were to be approved?
Okay, I'm not the parliamentarian, but I'll defer. I can answer, but I'll defer to the parliamentarian.
So if this vote is successful, then instead of being treated as is the current practice, as a held motion because it is an item that failed to receive sufficient votes, it would then be a finally decided item that would not reoccur on a subsequent agenda?
Right. If this- if the motion to deny is approved, then that's it. It doesn't come back at the next meeting.
So what would be the process, then, for the party to fulfill their nominations? Can they resubmit the same name?
The process would begin again the way that it was originally placed on the initial
I'm not a tennis player, but I think there's a term in tennis called unforced errors. Is that right? Some of my tennis friends are out there. And, you know, unfortunately, when it comes to this subject, we've- we, as a body, sort of collectively, have engaged in a lot of unforced errors, even going back to when we had the chance with different members up here on this board to ratify a decision by the Board of Registration of Elections to terminate then-Election Supervisor Director Rick Baron, but we chose to go against that, which cost us, I don't know how much time in terms of, we could have been at it in terms of improving our election. So, you know, we went against the wishes of that particular board, and that just sort of cost us time and invited more partisanship into the process. And then here we are again, in which are obviously partisan appointments by their very nature, and we're going to have another unforced error potentially right here in front of us if we vote to deny and not allow this to come back and then approve it. So, you know, I said before, at the previous meeting, we didn't approve the nominations that came forth from the parties. We decided that we were going to go against what the statute said, you know, we're going to be creating bad precedent and inviting ourselves in unnecessary litigation, and this is just an unforced error, in my opinion.
Commissioner Abdi Rockman?
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to speak on my intentions. I'm American. I'm a Navy mom. I'm an elected official that sometimes have to make decisions that are not popular, but I respect any and all individuals to have their rights to their opinion. I respect my colleague to the left of me, and I respect my colleague to the right of me. Are we going to always agree? No. That's the beauty of a democracy. We can agree to disagree without being disrespectful, without being condescending, or without invalidating the other person's right to speak. And I feel compelled to say this is one of those moments that all parties must respect a person's right to speak. The person doesn't agree with you, that's fine, but that does not make a blanket decision that they're un-American, that they're unethical, or all of that, or even hypocritical. The Board of Elections yesterday, the State Board, made a decision, and even in the decision that they made, they felt warranted to send a letter vindicating two employees that had been attacked. These employees had been attacked that did absolutely nothing. And so what I say to my colleagues and I say to this public, I'm not going to always agree with you, but that does not mean that I don't respect your right to have your opinion for your person. I just don't agree with it, and I would ask that we understand that at the end of the day, I'm not an attorney. There are an attorney- there is an attorney that sits on this body, but if there is something that I have done wrong, then I stand on it, and I'm willing to take whatever repercussions if I think I am doing it right, just like any of my colleagues to the left or right of me think that they are doing what's right. I respect your opinion. I would ask that you respect mine, and I will ask you to let the process play out. Thank you.
I'm somewhat confused by the current motion to deny. I thought we just denied it, five to two. They made a recommendation. We didn't accept it. It was defeated. It's not a held motion. It's not- it shouldn't come back. It was defeated, five to two. It seems duplicitous to me. Madam County Attorney, why would this come back? Why would this be like a held matter when it was defeated five to two?
It's my understanding that although our board procedures don't specifically provide guidance on that, that the practice has been to replace matters that fail back onto the agenda as a held item.
I don't- I disagree with that. I don't know who- I don't understand. I don't know who gave you that interpretation of a practice. The reason it came back this time was because there were not four votes against him the last time. That's why it came back. That is like a held matter because it didn't get four affirmative votes one way or the other. Something that gets four affirmative votes is an act of this board, and either it is an act in support or it is an act to deny. I don't- I don't- please help me understand how a vote of five to two could not already be a denial. Please.
If the board chooses to take that action and interpret it that way, you are a small body who has the ability to make your own rules, but I'm not saying that our policies mandate that outcome, but my understanding is that that practice has been engaged in.
How else could a vote of five to two be interpreted?
Commissioner Arrington?
I'm pleased. Somebody help me because that doesn't make any sense to me. How else could a vote of five to two be- how else could it be interpreted?
The prevailing motion was to approve. When the prevailing motion does not receive the requisite four votes, then it does not pass. Then it's brought back at the next meeting. The prevailing motion once again was to approve. It did not receive the four votes. Therefore, it would have come back, but the motion then at this same meeting to deny did receive four votes.
I disagree with that, Mr. Chair. I have- that has not been our practice. We have not voted on something. When there are five votes against something, when there are four votes against something, it doesn't come back. The board has spoken. A vote of four commissioners is the voice of the commission. It takes an act of four of us for this commission to act, and if four of us vote against something, it should not come back. What comes back is something that's held or something that doesn't get four votes. This matter, the previous matter, got three affirmative votes last time, did not get four affirmative votes, or got two affirmative votes last time. However many it got, it didn't get enough to gain support. Hey, you know, it seems duplicitous to me. We already denied it. There were five- it was five to two. That's a supermajority.
So they- the practice of the board for the past 20 years has been as I outlined, so let's- I'd like to move us along.
I have to respectfully disagree. I've been here for eight. This is my ninth year. That's not accurate.
Commissioner Thorne, you have the floor.
I just want to, for the crowd, for the guests that are here, if you could explain your interpretation of the word "shall" in legal language.
Commissioner Thorne, typically I don't like to give advice on disputed matters in this public forum, but just generally speaking, it is true that "shall" is a mandatory word. The really relevant and the crux of the question is going to be, to what action is that mandatory language directed? And that is the part that I think a lot of folks are not looking at the rest of the language of the ordinance.
Thank you. I think that's helpful for the people out here. I also want to say there's a process, like if they have to put another nomination up, it has to be within 30 days. So that means the next meeting, nobody can be put up unless they put the same person up is- is- well, my thoughts are, is the Republican Party not going to have a voice, an equal voice, on the board because of our actions here are going to be denied in the next meeting because there is not a replacement member put on the board?
So the 30-day requirement is how the process should ideally work. I have not found any authority that would prevent them or prohibit them from submitting another nominee if this board will consider it. I don't know of anything that would prohibit that irregularity outside of the ideal term.
Thank you. That's all.
Commissioner Aaron, you want to be heard again?
Call a question.
My question's been called. Let's vote on the call of the question. Is there a second? Properly moved and seconded, Madam Clerk.
And the vote is open on call to question. And the motion passes, six yeas, one nay.
Motion on the floor is to deny. Let's vote.
Let's vote.
And the vote is open on the motion to deny. And the motion passes, five yeas, one nay. Two nays with Commissioner Thorne.
Next item.
Back on page eight.
Mr. Chair. The Fulton County Sheriff is here waiting on an item that is all the way at the end of our agenda. And to allow him to go back to work with his employees who are here with him, with his team. I would ask that we move up 23-0432.
It's on page 11.
Page 11, which is a matter.
All right, without objection, any objections?
Which is a matter related. And if we could move it up to 4414.
No objection.
Okay, thank you.
Sound that item, please.
Bottom of page 11.
Where's the sheriff?
23-0432. Request approval of a resolution requesting that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners receive regular updates from the county manager regarding conditions, concerns, and improvements at the Fulton County jail facilities and for other purposes, sponsored by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman and Vice Chair Ellis.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
This is not the sheriff's item. This is a commissioner's action item. Am I reading that right? Which item are we on?
It is 23-.
0432.
0432.
Yeah, this is a board of commissioners' item. This is not a sheriff's action item.
It's related to the jail.
Well, it might be related to the sheriff's item. But we've not invited the, this is a commissioner's item, sponsored by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman and co-sponsored by me.
And the sheriff would like.
Well, he could comment on it potentially, but out of due respect, this is our.
I will ask the sheriff to come up.
Just a minute.
I will ask the sheriff to come up.
I have the floor. This is a commissioner's action item. The commissioner should be allowed to provide commentary before the item is actually discussed. And then if there is a representative where the sheriff wishes to come to speak or to respond to questions, they should at that time. This is not an invitation to have the sheriff come in here and speak before this particular item is outlined by the sponsoring commissioner. It's a board of commissioners' action item, not a sheriff's action item.
All right, there is objection to moving it up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, but I thought we already moved it up. You said no objection and.
There is objection.
Okay.
There's no objection necessarily to bringing it up.
I thought I had the floor this time. I thought I had the floor this time.
Just a minute, just a minute.
I'm clarifying that there's no objection.
I thought I had the floor this time.
Go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you. So thank you very much, Commissioner Ellis, for explaining that. And we will follow the process as necessary. And I will request for the sheriff to provide input. So that is the process and we will follow it. So you all may be seated until I call you for your input so that they can follow the process and have whatever they need to say be said and heard. All right? Thank you so much for your patience.
Y'all want to hear it now, later? I don't care. Just a minute.
With all due respect, because the sheriff is very busy, I think we should go ahead and hear it now.
All right, sound that. Let me remind you all, we have a hard stop at 2:00. I don't care if it comes hell or high water. We're stopping at 2:00 today because we got a follow-up meeting.
I understand, Chairman, with all due respect. No, no, no.
Bottom of page 11, 23-0432. Request approval of a resolution requesting that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners receive regular updates from the county manager regarding conditions, concerns, and improvements at the Fulton County jail facilities and for other purposes.
All right, yes, we forward. Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, Commissioner Barrett, Commissioner Ellis.
Okay. The purpose of this resolution is to receive updates from the sheriff's department to the county manager and his staff. The purpose of this is to make sure that we know what's going on as commissioners. There is an ask based on the fact that the jail is in a crisis state. The purpose, from my perspective, based on several phone calls I have gotten from not only Fulton County taxpayer citizens, I've also gotten it from other elected officials. There are questions that I cannot necessarily ask, excuse me, that I cannot necessarily answer. This is a tool in collaboration to make sure that the Board of Commissioners and the sheriff office are collaboratively working together through this crisis. That is not to give the impression that we're not because we are. But I would be remiss if I didn't say constantly, I am receiving calls, that there is a blanket check being written for the sheriff without accountability. Now, that's not true. And when I talked to the sheriff, I told him that's not true. But nevertheless, if the public feels through this crisis that they don't know what's going on, if commissioners that are sitting on this body wants to know what's going on on a regular basis, I don't see a problem with accountability and transparency. I ask for support of this and it does not mean that I don't support the sheriff. I have been openly supportive of him. Came in here asking money for him. So I am supportive of the sheriff. Will we always agree? Probably not. I've got two colleagues, one to the right and one to the left, that we disagree. And I have the utmost respect for both of them. But at the end of the day, the jail is in a crisis. It is important that the office have a working relationship with the county manager and his staff and provide updates. I am not requiring, nor am I asking for our sheriff to come down here and talk to us every month. That is not the case. But there are certain benchmarks, there are certain issues that I feel that need to be reported on monthly until we get through this crisis. And so the taxpaying citizens of Fulton County would be assured that the commissioners, the executive staff, the county manager, and the sheriff office are all working collaboratively to make sure there's accountability and transparency. If the sheriff needs the money, we have already let the public know what he needs because it has already been discussed. But it goes beyond money. It's not just that. And I don't want the focus to be put on that. The focus I want to be put on is that the jail is in crisis. If I was in crisis, there would be a regular update to my family from any medical provider if I was in crisis until I got out of the crisis. And so the effort from me for this resolution is accountability, transparency, and to make sure that the Fulton County taxpayer citizens know that we are working collaboratively with the sheriff and also the county manager and his staff to be, to know of any things that's going on that requires our attention. I am not trying, nor is this resolution in any way trying to interfere with the operations of what the sheriff needs to do. And I want to be on record that that is not the intent of this. The intent of it is a collaborative effort for accountability and transparency.
Commissioner Barrett.
I just have a couple of questions. And I certainly understand the goal of, you know, getting as much information as we can, especially during this time of crisis. And, but I do want to know what is different in this versus what the sheriff presented when he was here two weeks ago? Because he did very clearly discuss updates that he was planning to give to us. And while I know this is monthly and he talked about it every other month, he also asked for, or I'm sorry, he also said that he would be providing, I believe, a real-time dashboard of a lot of this data. So my question is, how is this different from what was already, different and or better from what was already offered?
From my perspective, the difference is, one, it's monthly as opposed to his discretion as to bi-monthly or when he decides to give the report. And that's not to say it's a bad thing or not what I'm trying to say. This is monthly regardless. There are certain benchmarks or certain information that needs to be given to the county manager's staff in order to make sure that all the commissioners have the information they need in order to make the decisions that we need to make. Finally, accountability and transparency. I go back to my earlier statement. Because it is a crisis, I believe it is best that the report that he does not have to make himself, his office makes the report and works with the county manager. And our county manager team, if there is something that is a concern of ours or if there's something that needs to be addressed, they'll know it then as opposed to us finding it out at the Board of Commissioners Day. The problem with the previous process is a lot of times we don't have the information until the Board of Commissioners Day. We don't have the information until the agenda comes out. Now, that's not to lay any blame at the sheriff's feet or the county manager's feet. That is to ask a directive that there is an ongoing communication monthly during this crisis period to make sure that the county manager and his designate know what is going on with certain parameters. Now, the county manager, if you would like to opine on that, because I have had conversations with you earlier as to how important I thought this was. So if you would like to add any further comment, I would ask you at this point.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I think the mechanism would be the county operational report, which we'll provide later today. I think it can be added to pretty easily from Project Orca and the courts, which is reflective now of the BOC resolution that was passed previously and now adding this piece. I do think we're working together to have this data readily available. So I don't think that will be a heavy lift. And I agree, we can make the report supported by Michael and Amelia and others that may choose to be here. And again, I think it will be fairly seamless to do. And as you recall, we probably preemptively tried to put a dashboard in front of you at the last meeting. It wasn't ready for prime time. But with this directive and a little bit more work, I think the dashboard will be quite informative. And that's what would be in this operational report, which again is already on the recess schedule each month.
All right, Commissioner Barrett, you still have the floor?
Thank you. I want to ask, I guess I'll just direct this to you, Mr. County Manager, since you've taken the floor here a little bit. But on the dashboard, I believe I heard that it was supposed to be real time when it was discussed. Is that not accurate?
Well, I'll let the sheriff speak to that. But I think he's planning to have a real-time dashboard. When I was talking about in the last meeting and Doug Schuster from EMSI presented what we presented, it would be something that would be presented as of the date of that meeting, for lack of a better term. Therefore, it might be a few days post when the data was offered. But to me, it would still be quite effective.
Can we get some clarity on that from the sheriff's team? On whether it's real time or not real time and where it will be and who will have it and all of that? That'd be helpful, I think.
First of all, good morning still, or good afternoon. As always, here's where I am. It will be real time. Our goal, what we have done is taken this assertion in this resolution that we already do not work well with the county manager. And hence my problem with the resolution. We can agree to disagree as we've done in the past. We are going to focus and create a real-time, you can already download the sheriff's app. And we put a button on there that will give everything that is asked for in here in real time. That's our goal. I will not be here every month. I've been the most transparent sheriff in the history of the county. And so the assertion that, and this is what it is, while it is written to try and bring some, from our conversation, some collaborative agreement, there is a mere assertion that there is not one. And hence my apprehension from that perspective. I have praised the county manager, EMSI, and Alton and his team for the collaborative work we've done. And that's how we have really forecasted what the sheriff's office has needed over the last two and a half years, going on three years. What this does is undermine the integrity of what I have brought to you all as commissioners. It simply says, I don't believe what you're saying. And the assertion is really disrespectful in certain areas because there is no one that sits up there or the 1.2 million people I represent that cannot call me. Because I get the same calls. I get the same calls. I get the calls from you all. I get the calls from those loved ones that have loved ones locked up. And here's the other piece, all right? As a constitutional officer, I can't be compelled to do any of this. I have done this simply because my overarching goal is to be transparent, to make sure from day one, and I appreciate the tools, I appreciate each of you and Commissioner Kadesia. I appreciate you coming first week and understanding. I said the jail has been in crisis since before I took office. And so ultimately, we have worked together to resolve these issues. So from that perspective, what we have done is really parcel of taking this and what you'll see in the next two weeks is via the sheriff's app, any one of our constituents, 1.2 million people, and we want people to download the sheriff's app, can go on and get this real-time data. So they are currently working on that as we speak. So I hope that answers the question.
So do you have an ETA? You said next week it'll be.
Our goal is to have it up and, so the sheriff's app is up and running. The data points that include this, we hope to have in the next week and a half to two weeks.
And the data that's asked for in this resolution, there are some breakdowns that are fairly detailed about the staffing vacancies and actual numbers and those kinds of things as well as some specifics on the population. But there are sort of some more vague language at the top of the resolution about reporting on jail conditions, medical care, and building maintenance. And I'm just wondering, A, I guess this is really more a question to you and Vice Chair Ellis, Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, but also to the sheriff in terms of what are the data points? I know you brought it to us last time. But are there any data points in the app and on the dashboard that would address jail conditions, medical care, and building maintenance?
So part of that, if I may, part of that is what I actually brought forward, which I don't know if I can say this loudly enough or often enough. We don't own the building. Mr. Davis and his team provide the maintenance for the building, et cetera. There is part of what the county manager mentioned in terms of that dashboard, nearly an $8 million ask there for us to continue to occupy the building. I brought wheelbarrows in here, pieces of the building, right? And the only mistake I made was I let my team tell me I couldn't put y'all's name on seven wheelbarrows. And I should have because it was five wheelbarrows, 1,500 shanks. And those are parts of the building that Mr. Davis, his team, EMSI, and the county manager, in collaboration with the sheriff's office. in collaboration with the sheriff's office, have worked to put a plan together to ultimately address each unit, all 78 units, movement of those individuals out so that we can continue to do this. And guess what? When we get to 77 and 78, we're going to start over again at number one. So this is a, this is an ask that has been working in collaboration. Speaking of, now, anything, we will publish anything between the county manager and our general counsel that is not, legally, we cannot publish, right? There may be some things around HIPAA and Navcare that we can't publish. But some of the things that we are doing that simply are outstanding. If you, if you listen to the conversation a couple of weeks ago, we saw 1,000 people with the help of Navcare. We addressed some concerns. Two weeks later, almost three weeks later, we saw 2,200 people. So we have a good cadence of improving services. The conversation around vacancies. There is a, there was a robust conversation last meeting, to the point that I started to walk out of here, but I didn't. Because what I'm not going to be is the target of anybody's political aspirations as, in terms of vacancies. What the actual data said was from the beginning of the year, here are vacancies. And so what, where the disconnect is, is between the county, what they see as vacancies, and what we see as vacancies. And so specifically, right now, we have 63 sworn vacancies and another 45 professional vacancies. And so my comment then was, when we get below 75, I would ask you all to fund the 24 unfunded positions we have so that we can continue to fill these vacancies. But to be even more specific, we are currently 28, almost, we have 43 individuals that we brought on in the last three and a half months, which is really unheard of in terms of how we continue to push forward. And this is last month, from that perspective. Plus the 15 I mentioned on, on two weeks ago. The disconnect is where county HR holds vacant positions like, what's the, the workers' comp, right? They don't position, they don't count workers' comp. We count it. We see it. There are a number of things that they can't see. And that's why ultimately, the numbers that county represents are higher. So we track it every day. That may be something that ultimately, as we close in on those vacancies and every open class, every class that we have with respect to new hires, we can publish that. So there's nothing that, again, unless it's legally, we can't publish, we're open to publishing. And that is something that will be updated every week. And you'll get that more than on a monthly basis. So that's our goal from that perspective.
So then I guess the question to the county manager team would be on the maintenance front, since that is through Dream. That may be a, you know, a separate report or those numbers could be incorporated. But it doesn't really break down in here. And again, I'm sorry, I sort of asked you a question, Commissioner Abdurrahman, too, and didn't give you a chance to answer it. But I'm just sort of wondering specifically what you want to see regards maintenance in terms of a report? And then also maybe what we can get?
What I want to see, the sheriff has been very vocal about toilets not working as well as other things. He's correct. He does not own the building. So if he, in this monthly report, that that's, that, first of all, let me say this is not an effort to undermine him. This is an effort to work with him and strengthen the communication. Because the directive is not just to what, as sitting commissioners, we want to see. We want to make sure that the county management team is engaged. If the sheriff does not have 50% of his toilets working, then the county manager should know that, and all of us should know that, because that is an issue. And so what I'm saying is, this is not to undermine, because there are some things in his capacity that he will not speak with the county manager on. And I wouldn't want him to speak on it, because it's not our business. He has to run his, he has to run the jail. And we also get into issues of liability of what he is trying to do and maintain as a constitutional officer. So I'm not going to ask him about pears when he told us we need oranges. Do you understand what I'm saying? It's no gotcha legislation. It's legislation for accountability to make sure that the county manager is working with the sheriff. And the sheriff is working with the county manager to keep us abreast so there can be accountability and transparency for everyone. And that is the nature of this. And so county manager, if you want to speak, I'll give the floor to you now.
Thank you, ma'am. If you recall in the last meeting, we had a very detailed plan that we did not try to show on the chart because of readability. But the sheriff's term, I think, is blitz. And I think it's very appropriate because people will be moved out of a zone. They will be moved to Union City. Then we will completely revamp that zone in terms of all needed repairs. So I think, Joe, we could either, of course, report on each month the status of a zone, which starts July the 1st, in terms of our activity, or even the sub-elements of a zone that are being repaired. So I think it'd be very apropos and clearly possible to report against that. And we have a schedule and funding that I'll discuss later that will be needed. But it lays out the expectations, both time and money.
Could you also add to that, perhaps just sort of a summary level, the numbers around the number of maintenance requests received? Maybe the, you know, the turnaround time? And, you know, how many are open and closed, and that sort of thing? I think that would be helpful, too. So we know if, if the sheriff's department is reporting, you know, 10 maintenance requests a day, that they're getting addressed and that they're getting handled by our, our department.
Yes, our maintenance provider currently produces a monthly executive summary that breaks out all maintenance activity in the jail by trade, by location, by task. It's forwarded to me each month so that I'm aware of their productivity. And it's driven by, as Commissioner Barrett indicated, the number of call-ins and things of that nature. So we know that right now, for example, for things that are being called in, they're completing roughly 96% of all work being called in.
Yeah, I mean, I have gotten some, some comments from constituents asking, you know, why things aren't maintained. So I think having that report would be helpful. So I don't know if that just needs to be added into this language. I don't know if there, if there needs to be more collaboration before this is, you know, goes forward, if it goes forward. I'm not really sure where, you know, I think we kind of have all the data already. I'm not sure if we need this legal mechanism. But I certainly support us working together to understand what's happening.
All right. It's 12:17. We're complicating something that's real simple here that's before us. Commissioner Ellis, Vice Chair Ellis.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mr. Chair. I think it is, it's pretty straightforward and simple. I don't think there's anything here that's undermining, disrespectful, or implies anything, you know, certainly of that nature at all. This is just a request that we have a monthly reporting with some consistent measures that we see over time to see how much progress we're making. That's all it is. And we all should be comfortable with that. The three things in particular that it calls for was specific information around facility utilization. It's got some specifics on that. As you'll recall, there seemed to be some confusion at the last meeting about some of the data points were there. This provides some specificity as to what was desired in terms of what we would like to see and the ability to track that over a monthly period of time. Secondly, it calls for certain information around staffing vacancies, et cetera. There may be differences in the way you look at something versus our HR folks will look at something. But I think we should look at it in a consistent fashion, just the way we would look at vacancies across the organization. So if they have data, it starts with this data. I'm comfortable with it coming from our HR folks. And it can be monitored over time. If hires are made, separations, whatever, it's going to, it's, it's going to show that, it's going to show the trajectory of the progress or lack thereof. And it's a consistent measure that we use throughout the rest of the county. And then the third request was something that, you know, certainly is, it's, one of the largest contracts we have. That's where their jail facilities medical provider. And there's an ask that monthly phone call, monthly calls that were taking place jointly with the manager's offices and sheriff's office and the jail facilities medical provider presume, presume, resume. So those are the three things that are in there. This is just simply, you know, a good governance measure. There's nothing really, there's nothing controversial about it. I think the data points coming from the county manager, you know, is a good mechanism to have in place just because, hey, you know, it's, they're a third party that's bringing it to us. Doesn't, I mean, if you want to put it in your app, that's fine. But I'm looking to see sort of this consistent data that we've had sort of outlined, that we've got outlined within this particular resolution, come to us so we can see the progress made month over month. There have been significant funds that we've allocated for, you know, access to other facilities, i.e. ACDC, significant funding that we did at the beginning of the year to improve hiring, significant funding that we provided for the medical provider and the continuance of that. And we all know the importance of that. So I think these are three important measures that we all have a vested stake in. And we should have a consistent reporting of that so we should be able to look at and measure our effectiveness on it and how we're doing. That's all it is.
Thank you, Chairman. And thank you, Sheriff Lebat and your team. You guys have been very transparent, and I really appreciate that. And I appreciate you coming to our town hall and addressing all my constituents. They appreciate your interaction with the community, whether Republican, Democrat, whatever. Your outreach is truly appreciated. For me, I have to respect my seatmate here with her because she's fielding constituent calls. I don't have the constituent calls coming in over the jail. And as a commissioner, we need to answer our constituents. And we need facts, and we need data. And I think that this will provide even more transparency. It'll provide us as commissioners a tool to answer to people and to answer truthfully. I know you're developing an app. You know, I've developed apps before that could easily spit out the report from the app if you're tracking all these things. So maybe it won't be burdensome on you if you have your app developer generate this report for us on a monthly basis. It, you know, I really just have to respect and honor. I appreciate that you guys had a conversation and that you don't agree. But you agree on things. And I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. So I'm, I feel like we are in a crisis, and we just need to do something. And maybe we can just try this and see if it works. And if it doesn't, then so be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. 12:21. Commissioner Arrington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I think it's unfortunate. Certainly, I'm glad that we took this matter up because you were here and in order to give you time to go back. But I think it's unfortunate that we weren't able to receive the county manager's operational report before this, right? Because I think that that would have provided more insight into the information that we would already be receiving. I, I don't know that we need a resolution for this. County manager, can you provide us this information monthly?
Uh, yes, sir.
That's all, that's good enough for me. I don't need anything else. Um, you know, like, it's a request, right? I asked him, he said, "Yes, I'm good. What's the next?" How about the $2 billion we need to build a jail? Can we talk about something we really need to be talking about? Why are we talking about reporting on this? We've hired a consultant. We've hired a private outside consultant to come in and to work with the sheriff. It only makes sense, it only behooves the sheriff to work with the county manager if he needs to get some money from us. If he's not working with the county manager and providing that information, and then we come, he comes in and asks us for some money, he probably not going to get it. He better provide it if he wants us to vote yes for the money. Um, hey, the, uh, you know, this doesn't make any sense to me. I don't think it's needed. And, Mr. Chair, I think it's a further waste of our time.
Okay, I agree with that. 12:23. Commissioner Abdurrahman.
Chairman, just quickly, thank you, Chairman. Here again, this report that I am asking for that I, that I feel is needed now is temporary. It is because we are in crisis mode. It gives a directive to our county manager, and it's an ask to the sheriff. Now, whether he does it or not, that's on him. But it is a duty of us as elected officials, if we are receiving calls, if we cannot answer those calls, if we're receiving information that's half-information, to ask our sheriff and our county manager to work together. And that's what this is about. This is not about any undermining. This is about accountability and transparency. We're in a crisis mode at the jail, and we need any and all information that we need. Because we don't need the sheriff giving information that will affect his daily operations. And that is not the spirit nor the, the point of this. The point of this is, in a crisis mode, we need to show the community that we can work together for accountability and transparency. And it is temporary until such time, Chairman, that we get out of the crisis. Thank you.
Sheriff, what do you want?
I'll be really quick. First of all, I agree with everybody in some capacity. Ultimately, to include Commissioner Arrington is a waste of time in some aspect. I've been transparent, will continue to be transparent. Here's what I think the solution is. One, if there is an opportunity to correct the language, there was never a monthly meeting with Navcare, it was quarterly. Secondly, strike the sheriff out of there. Control what you can control as a board, and that will be the county manager and administration. And you have the assurances from me, again, as I've done in the past, to continue to work with the county manager, each one of his teams, to support the resolution minus the sheriff. Because I would then ask the county attorney to opine as Commissioner Arrington has eloquently, over the last several years, talked about separation of the powers, all the constitutional officers, et cetera. It's a slippery slope. If you include me in this conversation, the DA is going to be next. Our tax commissioner is going to be next. If you up to and include all those individuals that have these constitutional authorities to do exactly what people elected me to do. And Commissioner Arrington is absolutely right. If you control what you can control in this resolution, talk about the administration from that perspective, leave the sheriff out. I cannot in good faith come back to you if our team has not continued to do what we have done over the last two and a half, three years, and that is be transparent. So that would be my, my stake on that.
Christian Hall.
Well, thank you to all my colleagues for their input. Mr. County Manager, I'm a little bit confused by some of the discussion that has happened across this board concerning this resolution. So I want to ask you this question. Is the county manager's office and team working with the sheriff or not, and vice versa?
I think we work daily together, do we not, Sheriff? So the answer to that is, is yes. And let me amend what I just said relative to the report. We would have to work with the sheriff to get some of this data. In other words, there's no tracking mechanism other, other than his app or some, or getting it directly from him to know how many detainees we have in each location. So we would need to work closely, for example, on that. On the maintenance piece, we probably could report that independently. But I think it would be most productive, obviously, if we're working together because he has to move folks out. So I do think there's aspects of this where we have to continue to work together for the ability, for us to have the ability to include it in the county operations report. But we certainly could do that, given our working relationship.
Okay, and so that takes me back to the sheriff, then, for the things that the county manager said that he needs to work with your office on. Does that, this create any additional burden on you and your staff and your team to work with them even more in this fashion to have this information that the county manager needs on a monthly basis?
So again, it is not the deliverance of data. We talk almost every day, every other day. That is That is not the, that's not what's at stake here. It's the constitutionality of the four constitutional officers, be it the clerk, be it the tax commissioner, sheriff's office, et cetera, inasmuch as the control of the BOC. And so to that extent, we will continue to work together. I would simply ask, be it ACCG, you can have, have our county manager look it up, whatever, remove the sheriff from the context of the resolution. And then we will, because it's easy, to Commissioner Arrington's point, it's easy for our county manager to come back in and say, I can't get anything from the sheriff. Right? As a matter of fact, years passed. That's why, from my understanding, and I could be wrong, that's why additional resources were given to the county manager's office to make sure that you all, in this duality of command, you all had the best resources, the best information coming from Alton and his team, et cetera. So we will continue to work together because we don't have the luxury of not working together. But ultimately, this resolution undermines the authority of the sheriff's office in its, in its purest form. So what you can, what, from a BOC perspective, in terms of what you can compel the administration to do, is what I would say, again, it's, one, it's not needed. That's the first thing. The second is, somebody offer a friendly amendment to remove the sheriff. Ultimately, there is no issue. Because I still have to make sure that we are responsible stewards of taxpayer dollars and make sure that you all have the information you need. That's not going to stop. We just need to be accurate about it.
Okay, so when you say remove the sheriff, I see three different places in the resolution where the sheriff is mentioned. The first is very appropriate. It is line 11 that says, "Whereas the Fulton County Board of Commissioners recognizes Sheriff Patrick Pat LeBott and the sheriff's office have undertaken significant initiatives to improve the conditions, operations, and safety of Fulton County jail facilities and will continue to seek further improvements." That's fine, right?
No objection.
Okay, so then the other place where, places where it says Fulton County Sheriff is line 15. It says, "Be it further resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners hereby requests that Fulton County Sheriff's Office resumes monthly calls with the county manager's office and the jail facility's medical provider." So is that one of the places? I saw you shaking your head.
Those were quarterly reports.
They were quarterly reports.
Medical, right.
So changing them to monthly calls, does that create any issues?
It overworks the system, don't get me wrong. Again, we have already stepped into a, a space, if you will, every month, making sure that we're holding them accountable. And ultimately, it may not be in time for the Board of Commissioners meeting. This is why I said every other month, so that you could get the data of these blitzes. So there, there are maintenance blitzes and there are medical blitzes as well. It's not about the cause, it's about the result. And we're able to better articulate those month over month.
So you would prefer this to be every other month or quarterly?
The quarterly is for the, for the overall meeting. We have an internal meeting with NAF Care every month. The reporting structure of making sure you all have more accurate information, for me, is what I offered last week, which is every other month.
Okay, so I'm going to ask that question again. So do you want this to say every other month that calls will happen with the county manager's office and the jail facility's medical provider on a quarterly basis?
So let me provide a little more clarification. It needs to be removed.
It should be removed.
That becomes a directive. Now, what the county, what you should, what you could do is direct the county manager's office to insert into a conversation. But the assertion that the sheriff's office is now under the control of the board reporting this information, it should be removed.
Okay, and so the next place where we see Fulton County Sheriff is 18 through 21. "Be it further resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners hereby requests the cooperation of the Fulton County Sheriff's Office in the supplying of necessary data such that the requested information can be provided to the Board of Commissioners on a monthly basis by the county manager." Is that not already taking place?
It is.
It is taking place.
And the assertion and the word cooperation lends toward the conversation that we're not already doing this.
So, Mr. County Manager, can I just get your input on this? Because it's going back and forth. So the sheriff says that line 18 through 21 is already taking place. Is that your, do you agree with that?
Alton, you want to? My view is, we get the information from the sheriff's office that is requested. It doesn't say that, for example, on vacancies, we still, we still, we still need to, excuse my slip of the tongue, work to ground what is the basis for a vacancy. And I understand exactly why there's a difference. We have a report that if a position is vacant, it's vacant. What he has is more insight into people who are either out on FEMLA and that position is not available to be filled, or he's already hired but not necessarily filled the position. They haven't gone through all the background checks and the like. I think that's just simply syncing up, which we can certainly do. So I wanted to make sure, before I set all those statements, to ask Alton, is there anything that we would need, Alton, other than what I mentioned on the number of detainees in each facility and its relevant capacity? Is there anything else that we would need that we are not getting?
We already get the, the data on where individuals are by, by area. We've been doing that with the sheriff's office for three years. So that's not new information. When we need to get more data, we typically reach out to the sheriff and we usually get the data. So what I will say to you is, I, I don't have any concerns about our ability to dive down, if we need it by gender, if we need it by age, if we need it by location, if we need to assign a capacity per location, we can do that. So I don't, I don't see there being any, any, any constraints to, to doing that. We've been doing that for quite some time.
Oh, okay. So basically, you could strike that too? Because you, you said you're getting it, you've been getting it for three years?
Well, since I've been here, we've been working very closely. But certainly, with the sheriff, with Sheriff LeBott and his team, the data that we get in terms of the jail population, we get directly from them. We get that on a regular basis. That's part of the report that, per Commissioner Arrington, I share with you and I will share, I guess, in a, in a bit. To the extent that we need additional information, we will, we can work with the sheriff. But that's never been an issue in terms of getting the data.
Thank you so much for that. So then, I would like to make a motion to make an amendment to strike line 15 through 21 since the county manager and now Alton have, and the sheriff have made it very clear that these things are happening as they need to. And I'll leave that on the floor.
Is that a motion you want to make now to amend?
Yes, sir.
All right, is there a second to the motion to amend?
Second.
All right, promptly moved and seconded. So let's vote on the motion to amend.
And the vote is open.
Mr. Chair, let me make sure I understand the amendment, please.
After speaking with the sheriff, the county manager, and Alton about lines 15 through 21, they made it clear that these things are already taking place sufficiently. Alton said that for the past three years, he's been, he's been getting the data that he needs without any problems. And if there's anything he needs to know, he just contacts the sheriff's office and he gets it.
So the amendment is to just remove 15 and 21?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify one point?
Yes, sir.
We are not meeting quarterly with NAF Care, which we did do previously. So I would think you could direct us, and hopefully the sheriff would agree, that that wouldn't be a problem to meet quarterly with NAF Care. So that would be the one thing that I would say is not happening now that was happening previously.
I, I accept that as an amendment to my amendment that we at least put in there that the county manager and his, or his designee, his team shall meet quarterly with NAF Care.
I'm, I'm sorry, is, is, I don't know how much time is left on this NAF Care contract. I don't know that quarterly makes sense right now. It might need to be monthly for that right now.
Mr. County Manager.
Well, Sheriff is correct. We did, the previous practice was meeting quarterly. But I think, again, if acceptable to the sheriff, we would certainly want to meet monthly with them, given the urgency and, and your point, the termination of the contract by probably, most likely, end of year.
And, and my understanding is that we're removing any requirements or requests from, that this amendment removes any requirements or requests from the sheriff. This is just requirements or requests for county manager and county manager staff.
Yes, sir. I, I think we just have to have a wink and a nod. Obviously, I won't know when the meeting is if the sheriff doesn't tell me when the meeting is.
I, I would just.
And that's when it's most productive.
I, I trust you and your staff to give us the information that's needed or to set up the appropriate schedule, given the timeline that we're dealing with.
All right, I accept that. And so that's the amendment, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So there was a motion on the floor to approve something and then to second.
Correct.
Now, was there a request for a friendly amendment that needed to be accepted?
Yes.
No, I'm, I'm asking the chair.
Just a minute, just a minute.
So, and if not, I want you to explain kind of what, where we are right now in terms of what we're voting on. Now, this sort of a different, because traditionally, if there's a motion on the floor and approval on it, then somebody offers a, you know, and something like this, it's a friendly amendment, that the maker of the motion either accepts or rejects. But is that not what's before us, or is something different right here before us?
There was, there is a motion to approve on the floor. There was a statement made about a friendly amendment. There was never an official request for a friendly amendment, friendly amendment. In the absence of the request for a friendly amendment, the motion was made to amend, which was promptly moved and seconded. That motion to amend was made by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. That's what's before us.
So is this a substitute motion?
No, this is an amendment to the item that's.
So would the effect of this only amend the resolution but not approve the resolution?
Correct.
So this would only amend the resolution?
Correct.
It wouldn't approve the resolution?
That's correct.
Okay. So then, if it, whichever way it winds up, and then we're back to a vote on the original resolution?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. All right, let's vote on the amendment. All right, everybody voted on the amendment?
The vote is open. Yes, with Commissioner Arrington, the motion fails. Three ayes, three nays.
All right, now back to the motion that's on the floor, which is to approve. Again, I'll say it again, we're complicating something that's really simple. If you support the sheriff, vote against the motion to approve. That's all you got to do. If you think this makes sense, vote yes. And to me, it makes sense. It's simple. Commissioner Ellis, you still want to be heard? No? All right, Commissioner Arrington?
I'll tell you what, I do want to be heard. I was, I wanted to call the question.
Well, you can't do it now.
Well?
No.
I thought we were voting.
If nothing else, y'all have learned that. Commissioner, Commissioner Eric, do you have the floor?
I'll call the question, how about that?
Question's been called. Is there a second? All right, promptly moved and seconded. Let's vote on the call of the question. We've been on this 45 minutes, which is.
Wait, hold on, is the call of the question on there?
Call of the question.
And now the, the motion to call the question, vote is open.
All right, call the question.
And the motion to call the question passes unanimously.
All right, now back to the main motion on the floor, which is to approve. Let's vote.
And the motion to approve passes, four ayes, two nays, one abstention.
All right, next item is 1244.
Back on page eight, under County Manager's Items, Open and Responsible Government, 230414, Presentation of the Fulton County Operational Report.
So I'm now. Mr. Manager, it's 1244, so let's.
Yes, sir, we will be, we'll be very quick. Today with the operational report, you'll see Project Orca, as usual. You also note that we passed 100,000 cases. The monthly report has gone up. Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry, Sheriff.
Yeah, no, again, I'm going to ask that the county manager, that the county attorney opine on any, anything that compels the sheriff's office. So the other piece, that, and that needs to be taken into consideration. And then I'll stand by for your portion of the report.
Mr. Manager, you have the floor.
Yes, sir, thank you. Again, you'll see the Project Orca report with, again, cases being cleared now over 100,000, a pickup in the monthly numbers. And by the way, we're 37,000 cases ahead of the straight line estimates. We also have Orca vacancies. Some of you have been interested. We are working with magistrate court on adding a judge using one of those vacancies, which should help the throughput in that process. You will also see a new simplified courts scorecard. So perhaps that's a harbinger of things to come, given the last discussion that was approved in the last BOC meeting. So hopefully, this meets with your expectation. We've provided a working summary of the jail bridging plan. So this will summarize where we are, but also reminds you of the resources that will be necessary to execute that plan, particularly in 2023. And I've asked Sharon and the finance team to develop a set of alternatives to fund that plan. One, one thing I want to underscore upfront is, this will more or less eliminate a mid-year review because any funds that would have been available in a mid-year review will be going to fund this effort, which obviously is your highest priority. I just want to make sure that there's an understanding of that. We continue to make progress with the Behavioral Health Crisis Center. Thank you for approving the contractor agreement last week. We'll give you a very brief update on that due to its importance. Thanking Dr. Rochelle for her overall leadership. But really, this has been a, a team effort with Latrina Foster, of course, the Behavioral Health Department leader, Jessica Corbett, leading our efforts on the legislative front, and Joe and Tim on the building front, as well as Commissioner Hall, who's kept us engaged with the community. I think all of those things are coming together very nicely at Oak Hill. And reminder, this is a very, very tight timeframe. Would normally be about a year to complete. We expect completion in January and then beginning operations first of February. For the retreat session this afternoon, we'll have a more lengthy agenda. We'll be talking about the two primary jail scenarios that you've asked us to look at. There may be something in the middle of one of those two or one of those two. But really, we're trying to narrow in on a, if not a decision, at least a direction. And then, given that, we'll reprise the interactive financial section that we tried in the last section, hopefully with improvements this round that has you seated in a different manner and with much more ability to see those real-time interactions, which will allow you to delete, modify, or keep about 10 major assumptions and see the resulting mileage rates, and then discuss the alternatives to, to revenue than, rather than just the property tax increases. As you know, we will soon be moving into Election Central Hub, which is the new facility in South Fulton. We have a walkthrough scheduled for this week following the SEB decision that certified, or at least affirmed, I should say, no takeover of our elections, and it's all systems go for 2024. I want to tip of the hat particularly to Nadine Williams and Kathy Willard, and then Patrice Perkins-Hooker, as she comes in for their, for their leadership in getting us to that point. We also won an American Civil, Civil Engineering Project of the Year Award for the animal shelter, so I want to call that to your attention, as well as got very favorable, I think, treatment for the Public Safety Training Center when compared to the alternatives. So again, thanks to our team for, for all of that. So, Mr. Chairman, we have, again, a very quick way of walking through this, just limited by how many questions we have. And we'll start with Mr. Adams.
Quickly, Mr. Adams.
Chairman Pitts, JLS Commissioners. I'm going to very quickly take you through the Orca update. Happy to answer any questions as I run through it. So I'll touch on the highlights. If you look at page five. So I'll touch on the highlights. If you look at page five, if you can, the first thing I'd like to point out is we did pass the 100,000 case disposed mark in May. It's a big milestone for us. And so it's something that we continue to obviously focus on in terms of disposing of these cases by October of 2024. The next slide, page six, gives you a sense for the recent change in terms of the cases by month. One of the things that I'd like to point out is that we did have a pickup in the, in the month of May, and by almost, almost 1,000 cases, actually 800. And that is here again, very favorable. As I had mentioned in previous sessions, this will be bumpy. We don't expect to see straight line months. We are going to see some months where we have a big increase or certainly a larger increase in others. That's due to the fact that the court system, particularly as we move these cases from prosecutors to the courthouses, or to the courtrooms, rather, are going to require longer cases and trials and jury trials and the like. But here again, very positive in terms of the month of May. Page seven gives you a quick look at a breakdown by the various agencies. Nothing really to focus on here, except for, as the county manager pointed out, if you look at the far right, we still are very favorable to what I'd call a straight line plan. We're favorable to that plan by 37,000 cases. So we've got a bit of cushion that we're likely to need as we move through the next year and a half. But for the most part here again, a favorable bunt in the, in the month of May, which continues to help us in terms of our project-to-date numbers. The next slide talks to our hiring progress. We continue to see progress in terms of hiring, but we also are seeing the attrition that you see across the county and across really the entire city, which is, you know, we hired six individuals and we lost five. So we made a little bit of ground up, but continue here again to focus on hiring. But clearly, we are still very much in a tight labor market situation when it comes to the resources that we need. But here again, feel good about the fact that we're able to certainly hold on in the areas like the DA and the state court, superior court and the like, which are very key to moving these cases along. Next slide, please. Keep going, please. Thank you. This, as the county manager alluded to, we put together a chart at the request of Commissioner Ellis. It reflects his last, the agenda that was passed a couple of weeks ago that looks at certain benchmarks for the entire system. These are called kind of state court reporting standards, and they include things like the number of individuals unindicted, without charges, felony cases disposed within 180 days, and so on. So on the left-hand side is the goal that was established as part of that agenda. April 2023 is the month we're going to use as kind of our benchmark period. And so, as you'll see, in May, we actually had an increase in the average length of stay. Not a good thing. We had a decrease in terms of the number of individuals, percentage of individuals, unindicted without other charges. You'll see that in detail in another charge. That's a good thing. Had an increase in the clearance rate for felony criminal cases. Felony case disposed within 180 days was relatively flat. And we had a slight uptick in terms of cases disposed within 365 days. So the summary of all of this is that we've got a ways to go, but in a number of the key measures, we appear to be moving in the right direction. Next slide. This gives you a quick look. This looks at the entire caseload of the system. It includes Orca cases and non-Orca cases. And the way I would look at this is, if you think about the number of resources that were provided as part of Project Orca, and additionally, other resources that were provided, you would expect to see an uptick in terms of the throughput of all of our agencies. And so that's what we're seeing here. So for example, when we see civil cases for superior court operating at 104% capacity. Commissioner Arrington, in the last meeting, you asked that we give you the absolute numbers, which you'll see in the very left-hand column of each one of the months, because you wanted to get a sense for what those benchmarks look like. So hopefully, that addresses what you were asking for. But here again, the big takeaway in this is that what you would expect in all of these is an increase in uptake higher than the performance from the benchmark period, from the benchmark period, in part because we have, in fact, allocated significant resources, both Orca and non-Orca, to each one of the, to each one of the agencies. Yes, Commissioner?
Mr. Adams, the baseline 28-2019 number, is that, is that an average of 28-2019? Is that an addition? Like what?
That's, that's the, what we did, Commissioner, was take the month, let's say March, and that's basically the average of March in 2018 and 2019.
All right. Thank you for that answer. It's a little confusing. I almost would want to see those, the 2018 slash the 2019 number right there, since that's the way it looks, that the, like the column is labeled.
Yeah.
So either we need to, at least for me, I would want to either change the label of that column or provide the 2018 slash the 2019 number, so that I can fully understand, because I don't know how we take the average of one year from five years ago, and then.
We tried to establish a pre-COVID benchmark. And so rather than just picking one March of 2019, which for whatever reason might have been an anomaly, we took March of 2018 and 2019 and averaged those to give us more of a smoothing out as a starting number. So that's how we arrived at that as the benchmark. It's not a perfect one, but by averaging them, you smooth out any particular anomaly you might have had in each one of the years, and that's where, that's what that benchmark number represents.
All right, if there's not, if there's not too much trouble, I'd like to see those individual years broken out.
Okay, absolutely. Next slide, please. All right, this gives you a quick update, and we have both in graphic form, and then we have a table as well, in terms of the jail population over the last, over the last four weeks. As you have, as you can see, it's ticked down a bit, particularly in the last, in the last two weeks. And as you can see, that is driven primarily by an increase in the, well, actually, a bit of a decrease in terms of the booking in, and a slight increase in terms of booking out. The right hand, if you look at the right-hand side, it has the legend. So it gives you a sense for the population by each one of the locations. To Commissioner Ellis's point, we can calculate some type of capacity. Now, it will vary a bit. I mean, typically, the capacity is 80% of total bed availability on average. But it will vary because in some of the cases, depending on the location. For example, if you talk about Cobb, that's, that capacity number might, might be a little skewed because we're not constrained by some of the classification stuff. But we can certainly calculate that and include that as, on the next, on the next report. The next slide breaks it down, same data, just breaks it down on a chart. Makes it a bit easier to calculate the numbers, to look at the numbers, figure out how they're calculated. Here again, nothing new here in terms of the data, just a different way of looking at it. Next slide gives you a sense for the jail population and the breakdown by unindicted, indicted, and the like. We had a decline in the term, so the unindicted individuals without any type of hold or other cases. And that is an important number for us, important benchmark. And it's something that in discussions with the DA, she's committed to focus on and continue to reduce over the next few months. Page, or the next slide, page 16. As you know, we have a number of initiatives that we are working with, working with the sheriff, we're working with the chief judges of state superior court. We're working with public defender and solicitor around a number of initiatives associated with reducing the jail population. And so as you look at these, we are, we've initiated most of them, and the ones that haven't been initiated are upcoming. And I won't talk through all of them, but the, obviously, the sheriff's been able to increase the number of inmate transports to superior court. That's a big deal, because here, the fourth one is one of the key constraints in terms of the number of cases that could be calendered in a particular day. We've added four senior judges. That's going to help in terms of adding additional calendars. We continue to work on the C3 attorneys program. That's particularly important when you have multiple, multi-defender cases. We are really focused on establishing a competency court. We think that's a big deal. It's something that Judge McBurney and team have been heading, heading up. They've looked at a couple of benchmark counties, and I think that's scheduled, quite frankly, to be presented at the bench. I think it'll be approved, and that'll make a, that's going to make a big difference for individuals, quite frankly, who get held up in the system too long. And we think that's going to be a big step forward for us. Next slide, please. In terms of priorities, we continue to focus on Orca and case resolution and performance. We are, as I just mentioned, very, very laser-focused on working with the sheriff and his team and the judges to continue to find ways to accelerate getting individuals out of the jail. And then finally, a lot of effort putting, being put in to prevent a post-Orca backlog in the system. With that, I will stop and happy to take any questions.
Are there questions for Mr. Adams? Any questions? None, Mr. Adams. Next, Mr. Manager.
I think if we'll go to page 20, I think Mr. Adams is going to provide a brief update on the jail bridging plan, and then Ms. Whitmore is going to talk about the financial plan associated with that.
Mr. Manager, I believe that Ms. Joyner and Mr. Schultz were going to talk to this. If not, I'm happy to, I'll defer to them and the sheriff in terms of how they want to approach it.
Glad to have them do that, do so.
Let me see, where do I start? Let me start here. I've asked twice for the county manager to opine on something legally. The county attorney to opine on something legally, she has not done it. I have made a decision that she needs to inform the board of commissioners about. Get that to you in writing, because you have under 15, 16, 10. You've taken an action that, in the verbiage, the way it is, actually, you don't have the authority to do. And so in that, she can opine on that further. But ultimately, this is the bridging plan that puts us in a place that will require funding, so upwards of $18 to $20 million, that the county manager and EMSI have put together a plan to make us, create an environment where we can continue to do the work of the Fulton County Sheriff's Office. The maintenance piece, if you want to parcel that out, as we've said continuously, does not. You said we don't own the building. We're just going to continue to bring it to you piece by piece. We talked about the food. We still have an obligation to feed people. That's where we are. Individually, we need to make sure that we do that. We're taking care of the medical piece. The shortfall part of the dashboard and the continued conversation with the county manager's office talked about making our team whole with respect to 2024. What does that look like ultimately? And then again, as we have discussed, both privately and publicly, the imaging around everything that has taken place and the joint communications opportunity between Ms. Corbett's office and our office is the fifth element on the dashboard. So to that extent, I believe, again, I'm going to continue to be transparent, as I have been from day one. So again, the county manager, county attorney has some news for you all, and then we will continue to move forward. Any questions on this bridging plan? Anything I left out, Mr. County Manager?
No, sir. I think we'll go to the next chart in a moment unless there are some questions.
You have a question, Commissioner Hall?
I have a question, because I'm trying to understand what you said the first, when you started this.
So the previous action that you took actually has language in it that is legal language, that you don't have the authority to zero control over the sheriff's office procedurally or policy. So we tried to stand that up, understand that piece. I've asked the county manager, a county attorney, who's going to simply now tell you, you can't compel the sheriff to do anything. Got it. So we took a friendly approach in that perspective. So now I'm going to take a legal approach. And it will hold to question the authority of the board of commissioners versus the sheriff's office. It is something that I believe Commissioner Arrington really pointed out, since it's, it was a fruitless attempt and actually shouldn't have to take place. The work of the people is being done, and ultimately, this undermines the sheriff's office. There's no way around it. I've asked the county attorney previously when we had the discussion, no one, and her response to me was, none of you asked. And so she would have simply said, you can't compel the sheriff or request the sheriff to do anything. So I'll let her speak if she wants to speak now, but I've asked twice.
Please.
This is an age-old question, which you've answered a thousand times. Would you answer it again?
So the sheriff is correct. I did tell him that I would have said that operationally, the board cannot require him to do, make these reports, which is why the language of the resolution is couched in the form of, it's cast in the form of a request. And that's why I do not believe that the resolution, while one may have an opinion about its necessity, is not unauthorized in that it requests an action from him as opposed to requiring.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, Amelia Joyner, Chief Counsel, Sheriff Labatt. There is no question that the specific language of the resolution does not direct the sheriff to do anything, as no one has the ability to do here pursuant to 15, 16, 10. However, in practice, when you put the practice in place, it does require the sheriff to take certain actions or face punitive consequences, consequences related to funding. And so therefore, the sheriff has decided that he vehemently opposes to the resolution and may seek to take additional legal action to have declaratory.
All right, let's do this.
Judgment from a court of competent jurisdiction.
Excuse me, ma'am. That threat has been hanging over us for I don't know how long. So if we're going to be sued, as Commissioner Arrington said, we get sued every day. So be it, if that's going to be the case. You have opined that we have no control over constitutional officers. That's your opinion, and that's, the board agrees with that. I'm the only one up here who does not agree with that language. I understand the words on paper, but I totally disagree with that. But that's your opinion, and that's what we're bound by. This resolution only requests, that's not even before us now, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I was going to say, I don't, I think that issue is over. I think right now, we're on the jail bridging plan, which to me is the more relevant thing.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I hate for us to get sidetracked on a previous agenda item.
Totally agree with you. Commissioner Hall, you have anything else, Sam? All right. Any other questions?
Any other questions about the bridging plan?
No, sir. Thank you, Sheriff.
Is there an action that you need, Mr. County Manager?
I think what we're going to do, Mr. Chairman and Sheriff, is go to the financial support that will be needed for this, which is back on page 22. Madam Clark, if you could back up one page and let, I'll ask Ms. Whitmore to discuss the plan that we've been working.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Manager. What we attempted to do with this slide was to simply show you what the cost of the jail bridging plan as currently presented is and a possible means by which to fund it. The first place that we would look to provide funding towards meeting these needs, of course, is to maximize salary savings coming out of the sheriff's budget to the extent possible. Then we've identified salary savings across the entire organization that we would pull to use to support this. And then we've also gone through non-agency and looked at all of the funds that we have currently available in non-agency and identified approximately the 7.4 that we could tap into to balance out this, this funding plan, if you will, for these items as we continue to move forward through, through this effort. I think I have mentioned previously that we were calling through the budget, looking for all available sources. We will continue to do so, but this is our current recommendation. And as. And as far as actually making resources available, that will happen over a period of time as we finish up all of the analysis across the entire budget, identify the resources that can be moved, and then move them into the buckets where they are needed to be moved. So you may see actions come back through the soundings process, through the remainder of the year in order to fulfill, fully fulfill the funding needs associated with the, the current jail bridging plan.
Vice Chair Ellis, followed by Commissioner Arrington.
So that was my question, so these really, we will see a series of future actions come forth that may require different individual votes on different contracts, et cetera?
Yes, sir. I, I think that the intent with regard to the facility maintenance piece is to, in order to, to get that action item moving forward, we're prepared to move forward with some emergency purchase orders where necessary and bring anything back to the board in July that would need final approval.
Okay, so the, is the, which of these on here are the emergency purchase orders you anticipate? Is that in the staffing of the jail towers? Is that one, for example?
My understanding is that the sheriff will be issuing the contract directly on the, the tower staffing.
Okay.
And the other items, the food service contract has already been issued. The board acted on the jail medical services contract at the last meeting. The jail maintenance item, I believe Joe has the vendors lined up for that. It's utilization of current vendors and some additional spending authority for standbys as well as for the current jail maintenance contract provider, J C I. The public affairs item, I believe, is still under R F P. And the staffing survey, I believe the intent there was to have the previous firm that completed the staffing survey update their analysis, so that item may need to come back to the board as a contract amendment. I'm not, that one, I'm really not sure exactly what the plan is, if the sheriff is planning to do that one himself, or if we were going to fall back on the original survey that was done like 2018, 2017, something like that. 2015.
Okay, so, wasn't exactly a super clear answer. I got, we got two contracts which have been approved or entered into, medical and the food, and a third, which you're saying is gonna be executed, but the funding for it will come from salary savings, not from additional funds.
The staffing survey? I mean, the, the tower staffing, yes, that one's coming in our salary savings.
Okay. So, so it'd be safe to say, anything that's in addition to those items will come back before us? How, this over and above kind of approved budget would come back before us?
If it's over and above the sheriff's approved budget? We would come back to the board in order to move any resources that are needed to the sheriff's budget. I'm not certain how to answer the question about his contract authority in, in that regard. I would have to defer to the county attorney on that.
For funding outside of the budget, or over and above what, what the budgeted portion has been?
I'm sorry, what was the, what was the...
In other words, if, if there's a request to go above sort of what's been allocated from a budgetary standpoint, that would come back before us?
As a soundings, yes.
As a soundings and/or a individual items, I guess it would have to be both, right? Potentially?
Well, the budget piece would have to come back to the board. I, I'm not sure about the contract authority piece.
So it'd be through the soundings process with specifically what the components of that were gonna be for?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Arrington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I've got a couple of things. One, Mr. Manager, I heard you say something about elimination of a mid-year review process, and I, I think we have a resolution that calls for the mid-year review process, so I don't know that we can just eliminate it. Number two, I would want to have a breakdown of where this non-agency earmarked for other purposes. I, I would wanna know what is the breakdown of that? And then number three, if we could go back to the previous slide. I guess I need some help in, in understanding, and maybe it's, I think I now understand it, but when I looked at it the first time, I didn't, because I see these numbers in red. I see the word shortfall, and then I see numbers in red. And then I see numbers in green, which means it's not a shortfall, which means there's a surplus of 2.3 and 4, 4.5, 4,500. So I, we may need some help on better... Providing a better image or perhaps a legend which will better explain, because when I see red and I see the word shortfall, that's a deficit. When I see green, I see, I think surplus. And so then, to me, when I count it up, it's only about 13 million, not 19 million. But I guess if you add in the green surplus numbers, that takes it to 19 million, which means they're not really green surplus numbers. They're, because if they're really green surplus numbers and we're at 13 million, and I take out 6 or 7 million, then I'm down, down to another 6 or 7 million total. So I need some help understanding the legend that's provided here.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. It's my understanding that the green ink is relating to salary savings. So those items indicated in green ink are to be covered by the salary savings as indicated on the second slide.
Okay, well, that makes perfect sense.
Yes, sir.
It would, it would be better if there was a little green legend there that says salary savings.
Agreed.
All right, and so again, that just gets me back to mid-year review, non-agency earmarked for other purposes. I would certainly wanna see the recommendations for where, where, where that's coming from.
And yes, sir, just to clarify, you're, you're correct, there should be a mid-year review. What I was attempting to say inartfully is that I think most, if not all, of any redirection in a mid-year review is gonna be used to fund this plan. But we would still perform that analysis because it may change between now and then.
Yeah, and we may wanna talk to Dr. Ferdinand, he might, he might really change it. Thank you.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Ellis?
Whatever that next slide was, after that, after this. So you're saying that there's up to, would it be a better way to read this? Is there up to 12.47 million outside of the sheriff's budget that needs to be identified to potentially fund this? Is that ultimately...
Yes, sir.
...what we're looking at? Okay, thanks.
All right, other questions, comments? All right, none, Mr. Manager?
Thanks, sir. We want a very brief update on the Behavioral Health Crisis Center. I have Dr. Rochelle to do that.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. First slide, you may have heard and read in the, in the A J C that the governor issued disregard statements, how this can impact an agency is removal of their funding. Fortunate for Fulton County in conversations with the state, we are still anticipating 5.6 million dollars in funding for our Behavioral Health Crisis Center and 11.2 million for F Y 25. We are going to continue to monitor the crisis capacity study, which will look at the ability for the state to meet the needs of behavioral health constituents and what those implications will be for Fulton County. Next slide, please. We do appreciate and your support for our construction contract, which was approved during the previous B O C meeting. Hogan Construction is the contractor, they have done very fine work for the county in the past. That contract is being routed, it is with the contractor at the moment, and they are gathering the final documents for that contract to be implemented. The Dream staff have submitted their site permit application with the City of Atlanta, and we will be waiting for that approval as well as the schematic design being completed by Sizemore. The next steps are to kick off the project the week of June, July 3, and you will be receiving additional information. We'll be coordinating with your teams on a groundbreaking ceremony in July. We are also finalizing the furniture fixture and equipment requirements for the facility. On this slide, you see a small diagram of the facility, which is a build-out in the courtyard area of Oak Hill. The next slide just gives you one of the critical path items, which is staffing the facility. It will be outsourced through an R F P. We do anticipate releasing that R F P June 26, and there are some task dependencies that we've listed here, ultimately, all with an eye toward opening the facility to the public February 2024. That includes my update, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Arrington?
Does the disregard statements from the governor give us pause on moving forward with this plan?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. We did have pause, and that was the reason that we did meet with the staff. We met with their finance team, and that's where we were assured that we would have 5.6 million in funding for six months of service, and we would then move into an annualized figure of the 11 million for F Y 25.
And those are the, the numbers that were initially anticipated and requested or approved in the budget?
The original numbers were 5.6 for 12 months, so we actually do have a better financial outlook in that 5.6 is only for six months with a longer or more robust budget for a 12-month period of 11.2. What was actually approved in the original budget, however, was a step up of 6 million and 13 million annualized. But again, in our conversations with the state, the, the budget is now adjusted to its original form.
All right, and just because we got 5.6 for six doesn't mean we gotta spend it in six months, right? Does it have to be spent within that six months?
It, it does. And yes, and they're on, we'll, we'll, we will spend it in that six months. This would be for staffing, and so we're anticipating bringing on the staffing and, and completing that process so that they are ready to open the facility in February. The fiscal year for the state is, is, as you know, is July to June 30, and so we feel that this six month will put us in a place for a successful launch of the facility.
All right, if you can, I'd like to, I was unaware that we were losing the whole courtyard, so I'd love to get an update later time on the, all of that stuff that's going where the beautiful courtyard is.
Yes, sir. In our effort to fit the facility requirements into the existing facility, we ran into several challenges, and so in conversation with the state, it was best to build out a facility that would meet all of the requirements by way of door size, door swing, and so that is what led us to build out the facility. And yes, sir, we'll be happy to provide an update for you.
All right, and does that provide more capacity?
It does. It provides more capacity. We do still plan to house the youth in the existing facility, but based on our guidance and advice from the state, we're going to focus first on adult capacity in the facility, which will have 16 chairs and 24 beds.
So how, what was the increase in the adult capacity?
So the state originally looked at only 15 beds, and so now we're going to be able to build out 24.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, unless anyone has any comments about the routine financials that are provided, this would conclude our report.
All right, continue, Madam Clark.
Continuing on the bottom of page 8, 230415, registration election. Request approval of an intergovernmental agreement authorizing Fulton County to, to conduct the November 7, 2023 municipal elections.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Optu Rockman. Please vote.
And the vote is open.
Let's vote.
And the motion passes unanimously. 230416, request approval of the I G A authorizing the county to lease state-owned election equipment to the City of Milton.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Hall. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. On page 9, 230417, real estate and asset management, request approval of statewide contracts for police pursuit and special service vehicles in a total amount not to exceed 1,217,066 dollars.
Favorable motion by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Hall. Please vote.
Vote is open. And the motion passes, six shades, zero nays. Set unanimously with Commissioner Arrington. 230418, request approval of the lowest responsible bidder in an amount not to exceed 348,000 for the purchase of delivery and delivery of eight new law enforcement vehicles.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Hall.
Vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. 230419, finance, request approval, review and approval of the 20, June 21, 2023 budget soundings.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Hall, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Optu Rockman. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. Under arts and libraries, 230420, arts and culture, request approval of the fiscal year 2023 contracts for services program funding recommendations.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Arrington, seconded by Commissioner Hall. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. 230421, finance, ratification of May 2023 grants activity report.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Commissioner, Vice Chair Ellis?
Sort of a procedural, procedural question here. This particular item typically is on the consent agenda. Any reason why, have we made a decision to not place it on the consent agenda going forward, or?
Was an error, Commissioner, or vice chair?
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's vote, motions to approve.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. Under Health and Human Services, 230422, senior services, request approval of a recommended proposal in an amount not to exceed 519,337.26 to provide food service management services with two renewal options.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Arrington. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion, motion passes unanimously. 230423, Public Works, request approval to close out a contract for standby... for standby engineering services in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand, one hundred eighty-eight.
We have a favorable motion by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six ayes, zero nays. On page ten, twenty-three, zero, four, two, four, Community Development, request approval of a statewide contract for temporary staffing services in an amount not to exceed one hundred ninety-eight thousand, thirty-six.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Optu Rockman. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please vote.
And the vote is open. The motion passes unanimously. Twenty-three, zero, four, two, five, Public Works, request approval of a standard utility agreement contract, item agreement with Georgia Department of Transportation for adjustment of thirty-six sanitary sewer manholes and twenty water valve boxes.
All right, favorable motion by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Optu Rockman. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. Twenty-three, zero, four, two, six, request approval of recommended proposal in an amount not to exceed four hundred thirty-two thousand, five hundred and fourteen to provide water master planning services for the North Fulton distribution network.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne. It is seconded by Commissioner Hall. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six ayes, zero nays. Twenty-three, zero, four, two, seven, Community Development, request approval to rescind prior twenty-twenty-three summer youth job training program and request approval to reallocate the rescinded funding in an amount of eighty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Optu Rockman.
All right, reallocate, thank you, Mr. Chair. How will it be reallocated and where? Will it be reallocated to the other agencies?
Yes, sir, and Stan Wilson will provide some more additional information, but these agencies chose to receive funding either under CSP or the Veterans Program, and so these, the agent, other agencies within summer youth will receive these funds.
Thank you. Commissioner Ellis shared a reallocation document with me. Thank you.
All right, favorable motion by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Optu Rockman.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. Twenty-three, zero, four, two, eight, request approval to rescind prior twenty-twenty-three community services program awards and request approval to reallocate the rescinding, rescinded funding, one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Vice Chair Ellis?
Just a quick question. I understand the kind of the folks decline that created, but what's the product, do we just, what's the process for determining where it gets reallocated to? Is it just next best score? How's that work?
Stan Wilson, Department of Community Development, goes to the next best score. We had a listing of agencies that were scored well, but we ran out of funding, so we just picked that list up.
Got you. All right, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Thorne.
Stan, Mr. Wilson. I just had a quick question. Do we know why they would decline the funding? What are some reasons given?
We've had agencies, with the exception of one, they had operational issues, but we had agencies apply to multiple programs, and so they selected the one that best fit, and that's the one that they're being funded for.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And let me just add, Commissioner Thorne, when Mr. Wilson refers to other programs, they were funded by Fulton County. So they chose to either go with the summer youth program or the veterans program instead of CSP because they felt that that met their mission more closely. So they were still funded by the county.
Vice Chair Ellis?
Is there something we can do next year to kind of avoid that issue, to where they're applying to both, and we're particularly potentially awarding to both, I guess?
We'd like to come back to the commission with the recommendation.
Okay. All right, great.
All right, motion on the floor is to approve. Let's vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. Twenty-three, zero, four, two, nine, Public Works, request approval of memorandum of agreement for participation in the automated transit network in the investigation and implementation study.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Hall. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. On page eleven, under Justice and Safety, twenty-three, zero, four, three, zero, District Attorney, request approval of a statewide contract in an amount not to exceed three hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine, one, to provide fifty radios and devices.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Hall. Please vote.
The vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. Commissioners' Action Items, twenty-three, zero, three, eight, three, request approval of an ordinance to amend the Fulton County Code of Ordinances in order to impose a distribution requirement before a member of the Fulton County Board of Commissioners may place...
Mr. Chair, I'd like to hold these next two items.
All right, motion is to hold the next two items without objection. Continue.
Twenty-three, zero, four, three, one, request approval of an ordinance to amend the Fulton County Code of Resolutions relating to budgetary controls for members of the Board of Commissioners to provide for the inclusion of paid interns as a permissible use of commissioners' budget and for other purposes sponsored by Commissioner Hall.
All right, Commissioner Hall, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I remember the day when we literally had an opportunity in the Board of Commissioners' office to hire interns. Those interns were provided through another entity, but we were able to bring them in. During that time, I was chief of staff to Commissioner Garner, and we literally hired a young man named David, who is now successful, successfully working at the City of Atlanta in the clerk's office for the city council. And so with so many requests coming into my office for internships and people saying, well, how can the Board of Commissioners not have the ability to hire interns in their office and give a young person an opportunity to gain experience and exposure in that type of environment? After speaking with the county attorney, we came up with this resolution, and that's all it is, to allow, there's no impact to the budget of the commissioner's office. The commissioner would be able to utilize the current salary amounts that are in the office of their, for their district office and hire the, up to four if they so, if they see fit and need four interns to their office. So there's no need for any additional funding or anything like that.
All right, Commissioner Barrett?
Commissioner Hall, I definitely appreciate this in spirit because I would love to have interns in my office, so thank you for bringing this to the floor, but I do have a couple of questions or maybe adds, maybe friendly amendments, depending on where we end up. Oh, a friendly girl. I'm just, there are some universities that don't allow you to get paid and get credit, so I'm just wondering if we could add some language in. So if a student chooses to get...
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, if they choose to get credit instead of getting paid, that we would have that option as well.
Oh, that's really good. Yeah.
I don't think that that type of arrangement is prohibited by the current ordinance, but we can certainly add that in to clarify that that is an option as well.
Great, yes, that's good.
The only other thing, the only other thing is that I'm a little bit concerned about the, you know, I know we all pay our own staff whatever we want in terms of salary, but I have a little bit of a concern about us sort of getting into a competitive, you know, type of situation where if one commissioner is offering twenty-five dollars an hour and the other one's offering thirty dollars an hour, that it might be confusing for the universities or for the students, and I know that wasn't the intent, so I'm just wondering, maybe this is for the county attorney or for Kenneth, how can we put something in place so that we're all offering the same hourly amount?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kenneth Herman, Chief HR Officer. I can provide, and the board can review as part of this resolution, the HR department developed a salary table for interns that we published, I think, back in February and March that encourages a salary range for if you have an eleventh grader coming into twelfth grade, a twelfth grader the first year of college, and it was modeled off of a salary structure that we found. I can't remember the name of the organization, but it's organization that tracks internships on a national basis, and we could provide that to you at the county attorney, and you can use that as your basis to quote-unquote "standardize" the salaries throughout the commissioner's office.
And is that something that you will be updating annually?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I mean, so then friendly amendment, just to base the salaries on...
That's really good, yes.
That's it?
And to add the specific reference to the internships for school credit?
Yes, I accept that friendly amendment.
Yeah, I was just trying to, I mean, people have, people on, people have interns right now, so there's obviously ability to do it. I'm just trying to understand why this particular item is necessary, and then I just, I think four per office is a little excessive, I think, you know, well, I think more than one is a little excessive for one commissioner's office, so, you know, I'm supportive of, you know, kind of internship-related programs, but more than one per commission office seems excessive, given our space is also, as well as just sort of the nature of the impact that would have, so I'm not support, I'm supportive of internships, but I don't think, I'm not, not of up to four for folks.
Commissioner Thorne? I agree with Commissioner Ellis. I mean, I have one unpaid intern on my staff now. She's doing an incredible job, and she's a great asset to us, and I'm thankful for her, but I can't imagine having three additional and make it a meaningful internship for them because it takes time to onboard and get them going and all that. So I do, I do support internships, obviously, since I have one, but maybe not in this manner.
Commissioner Arrington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am absolutely supportive of interns and making sure that they are paid. I thought we had a resolution that would not allow anyone to be working in the county without proper compensation. I know that we also have to be careful that these people are not working more than twenty-nine hours a week because then that triggers benefits and other things, and so I guess, Commissioner Hall, I may just ask that we do a friendly amendment that limits it to twenty-nine hours a week so that there are none, so there aren't any other unintended consequences of benefits and other things that, again, is coming out of the commissioner's budget. So I, if you want to hire ten out of your budget and that's your whole budget, that's your business. I don't care. But I would like to just make sure that we don't have any unintended consequences for benefits and things so that it's limited to the twenty-nine hours per week or whatever is required by federal law.
Madam County Attorney?
We can add that in there as well, if that's the, if that's the amendment that's on the floor.
Yeah, I accept that friendly amendment. And just, doesn't the language say up to four? So people are acting like they don't have the power to make a decision on if they want to hire one, two, three, or four as a commissioner. Can you just confirm that verbally, please?
The language of this, the resolution says no more than four, pay up to four interns.
Okay, so you have a choice. It is your choice if you want to hire one, two, three, or four. That's the power you have as a commissioner over your own office.
I did want to also ask Mr. Herman, in regards to the salaries, does it start with a minimum of fifteen dollars an hour? Is there, what is the floor?
The floor is the fifteen dollars an hour, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Thorne?
I just want to reiterate the fact that we're, we're space, we don't have enough space up on the tenth floor right now, so adding all these extra people would be difficult. I currently have two cubicles to work with, with four people, so just want to say that.
Many commissioners have an extra office somewhere else, you know, many of us have additional district office at another location, so we do have the space. And interns, as Commissioner Arrington just said, should only work twenty-nine hours. They shouldn't be here full-time anyway, and they should be very busy. If you need an intern, you need them, like you said, you need your intern right there, and I'm sure she would love to be paid. They, most, most students don't have the money, and they need every little penny they can get, and to have not only the opportunity to work in a commissioner's office in a county government environment and get that experience to have it on their resume, I remember, I'm old enough where we used to have the ability to do that in high school, but the high schools don't even offer it. Nowadays, kids come out of college with no experience, and so they have no leverage for getting that first job. We don't have those type of entry-level job opportunities like we used to back in the day, and I know I'm dating myself, but unfortunately, our kids today don't have many of the opportunities that we were afforded, and this is an opportunity to give them something that can gain them experience and exposure. So it is, as a commissioner, it is your, your choice how you use the resolution to hire your interns, but it does give an opportunity to pay them.
All right, any other comments? Let's vote. Motion on the floor is to approve.
And the vote is open. On the motion to approve as amended? And the motion fails, three ayes, four nays.
Next item.
No further items.
All right, let's recess for, actually, we did, great, one forty-seven, let's recess for lunch, executive session, items of real estate, litigation, what's the other one? I forget the other one all the time.
Personnel.
Personnel. Madam, let's go.
Resume the regular order of business. Items from executive session, Madam County Attorney.
Yes Chairman, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the request for representations at forth in items one and two of the executive session agenda?
You have a motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Vice Chair Ellis. Let's vote please.
Vote is open and the motion passes unanimously.
And is there a motion to deny the request for representations at forth in items three and four of the executive session agenda?
Alright, motion to deny by Commissioner Abdo Rockman, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Let's vote.
And the vote is open?
Now this says approve if the motion was to deny.
To approve?
Resume the regular order of business. Items from executive session, Madam County Attorney.
Yes Chairman, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the request for representations at fourth and items one and two of the executive session agenda?
Yeah, but motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Vice Chair Ellis. Let's vote please.
Vote is open and the motion passes unanimously.
And is there a motion to deny the request for representations at fourth and items three and four of the executive session agenda?
Alright, motion to deny by Commissioner Abdo Rockman, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Let's vote.
And the vote is open?
Now this says approve if the motion was to deny.
To approve?
Yeah. No, it says to approve.
Yes.
Is that what, that's what it means?
To approve the denial, yes.
Want to be, want to be real clear.
And the motion passes, six yays, zero nays.
Any other items, Madam County Attorney?
No further items, Chairman.
Any other items coming before us today? Alright, no further items to come before us today, we are adjourned. Thank you very much and see you in a few minutes on, what floor is it? Wherever Jessica is.
For a written transcript of this meeting or if you need reasonable accommodations including this communication in an alternative format due to disability, please contact the clerk to the commission's office at 404-612-8232.